Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. Today is Tuesday, August 12th. How did that happen? At six o'clock, we have Select Board members Sharon Russell, Matt Getty, Mary Ashcroft, and Joe Donardo. We'll see if Kurt Hathaway comes. He often does a few minutes, in a few minutes. So if you will please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, waity. We have on our desks the Select Board minutes for July 29th.
Motion's been made to approve by Nat.
Seconded by Sharon. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of adopting the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero with one extension. I'm going to sign and pass this around. Okay. Other than Kurt, we have?
I'll move to approve the orders.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the orders. We've all had a chance to take a look at them. Is there a second?
Yeah, good.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of any of the orders? If not, all in favor of approving the orders, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero with one extension. Any announcements from board members? No? Okay. Update with, from Select Board Chair, well, when it's Barbara's time slot, I'll say a bit about my visit with the planning commission, so we'll hold that for now. Do we have any questions from the floor or public comments from folks who want to be heard on things that are not on the agenda? This is where, everybody, yeah, okay, all right. Are you all together in one group?
Yep.
Okay, so why don't you, whoever your spokespeople are, come on up and have a seat here, and then people who are zooming in can see you. And hear you.
Scotty.
All right. Okay, and I think I did bring the clipboard, so if you would also sign in, so, yeah, if you wish to. Some people may wish to remain anonymous, and that's perfectly okay. Okay, could you tell us who you are and what you'd like us to know about?
Yep, I'm Keith Schneider. I'm a resident of Quarterline Road, as is most everyone here as well. And I just don't want to speak for everyone, but most of us in the community have talked, and we just have a concern about one of the properties in our neighborhood up on the road. I've been told by several people that I should have spoken with all of you previously, just didn't feel like maybe I should or the right time. But the location on Quarterline, I think all of us are concerned about the amount of traffic and type of traffic that takes place in and out of the residence. Among other things, as well, there's currently two RVs that are parked on the property. And I think there's a concern about how many people are currently living there. What are they doing with the wastewater that comes with the RVs that are parked on the property as well? I know there's no zoning regulations and anything written down in regards to policy with all of that, but there's been several instances where I've expressed concerns to Ted Washburn as well. And, like I said, several people have just thought that I should bring it to your attention as well, so. That's the basis of why I'm here.
Police Department has let us know about this, so.
Yep.
I appreciate you coming forward. Do you have going on, even though we don't have a zoning, we do have a health officer? Have you noticed things that would cause you to say we should ask our health officer to go up and take a look? In other words, are they dumping the sewage in the woods, or?
I hope not, but there has been times where I've been able to know when they're dumping it. I don't know where they're dumping it, but I can smell that that's taking place. My wood line is right on the property line there, so I hope that's not where it's heading, but I can't say for sure that that's what's happening or not. Yep. So yes, sanitation-wise, it's a concern.
Okay. So we can have, we can ask our health officer to go up. Any other, we can do questions from the Select Board. Does anyone else want to add information about this? Okay, come on up and identify yourself, please.
I am Karen Pizzetti. I'm also in the neighborhood. Yeah, we've had concerns over the years. We do clean up. There's a lot of syringes around. There's a lot of debris that we found. You know, pieces of couch and property items like that, that we had thought maybe it was, when the house was going to be sold, that they were starting to unload things. There have been people in different neighbors, like front yards, we've caught them on the Ring camera, there was just one on Saturday, and they did alert police about that at 2:40 in the morning. There's a lot of activity where, you know, it's just people randomly walking up and down the street, walking through the neighborhoods. Our property also abuts to this property. My husband had gone up and put some, again, more no trespassing signs. Dogs were barking, running around. They didn't come onto the property. I'm not sure if they're registered or whatever, but just, it's ongoing concern, and it's gotten worse. And especially with the campers there now, we don't know how many. There's been tents there. Don't know how many people are there. I know that's not our business, but it's just an ongoing concern.
All right. Thanks. Going to ask also for the police officers to weigh in when you have a chance. Can we add anything else? Any other neighbors wish to say?
Can I add, but just sit here?
Well, yeah, but we're going to miss your face on the screen.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Come on, Frank, come on up.
I live right next door, okay?
Yeah.
For a guy that's been miserable all his goddamn life, he sure has a lot of people around. So what's the deal? He had somebody fix his septic system. It was his buddies. The Beer Belly buddies with the shorts. Stuff like that. There's been vehicles in there with paper plates. Can't even read the numbers on them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you?
Jokes, mufflers, noise.
Is there a lot?
Dogs barking constantly. Poor Snyder must go crazy hearing those guys. He lives right, Mr. Snyder lives right back of Belloc. I'll bet he's not 50 feet away. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, the guy's been a nuisance forever. Everybody knows it, but nobody can do anything about it. I used to tell the constable about it. I can't do anything about it. It's like everybody's afraid of him. He's a curmudgeon. You know what that is?
I do.
I do.
He's miserable.
Yeah. I remember going up there many years ago on a site visit for the Board of Civil Authority. So we've, we're aware, and that, why don't we have here from the police chief or deputy chief?
I'd like to know how many people he's had living there. One day, there were seven cars and three pickup trucks. Now, what the hell are they doing? And half of them you could get going through the fucking stop signs.
Okay, chief?
Excuse me.
So we're aware of Mr. Belloc.
Yep.
Like Frank, I'm a little older, so my filter's worn out. Mr. Belloc has been a pain for many, many years. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we have this thing called the Fourth Amendment, where we don't have a right to just break into someone's house when you know they're doing something illegal. We have to have a reason to go in there and do it. The way we do it is you try to get somebody, arrest somebody, or do, make a motor vehicle stop, and arrest them for having drugs in their car. State police have done it multiple times. And yeah, well, we can't get in there. So we all know what's going on at his house. If you're pulling needles all around the house, they're injecting themselves with the latest dose of fentanyl or heroin they can find. They got a perfect opportunity. I can tell you the people that lived there, lived down in Cleveland, out in the city, when I worked for the city, and they're enough but a pain in my neck then, and they still are now. Only problem is, in the city at the time, there was more officers and more neighbors, more restrictions. We were able to get in there and do something about it. At this point in time, we, when we get the opportunity, we will do everything in our power to make Mr. Belloc's life upset him as much as we possibly can and get rid of this problem in your neighborhood. He recently, he recently was, had a house rough for sale. I was ecstatic. I know the person was going to buy it. I bet you all were, and they backed out of it and took him to court, and the gentleman was going to buy it. He wasn't willing to fight that fight. I was as disappointed as all of you folks and folks were. My daughter lives up in your neighborhood also. I just spoke to her. I get it. Trust me, I get it.
We have trespassing signs. I have property in Rutland Town, and I've had them back into our area, like undoing our fencing and like, excuse me. So it's
I would say, I know, I know it may seem petty at that point in time, but sometimes we call it broken window policing. If you guys, if we have a complaint, we can go do something about it. I can't live at your house. It's your guys' houses. If you give us information, if you become a pain in my neck, we'll become a pain in his neck. That's the way it works. I mean, that's, I can't say any more plain that is. We'll do everything that we can within the boundaries of the law to make him. It's not Mr. Belloc. Mr. Belloc is, as you know, has been very difficult and individual. He's allowed, he has a certain taste for a certain drug, and these gentlemen, I believe, I believe, I don't know if it's true or not, I can't prove in a court of law, has developed a taste for it, so he allowed them to come here and live with him, and he got free stuff. But now, he can't get rid of them. It's been more than 28 days. They've lived there. He calls up all the time, wants us to get rid of them, get them out of here, kick them out. I'm like, you have to go through an eviction process, as you know, and say to remind, you just can't kick people out. They've been there for 28 days. They pretty much own the house at that point in time. Costs money to hire an attorney, to go through the process to get rid of them. Mr. Belloc is not going to do it. We, we asked him, we told him the process. He wants us, the town, to go in there and kick them all out. Open the town for a lawsuit. I, as the chief of police and the town of Rowland, I can't do it.
One of the programs that I run for the Bar Association helps low-income landlords. So would you please put him in touch with me, and I may be able to find an attorney for him?
I, we, I, my intention is, I got a heads up, you folks who are going to come tonight. My intention is to go have a conversation with, with Mr. Belloc and his tenants, if you will, we can call them that, tomorrow. We call it a knock and talk. We'll knock and we'll talk. He refuses to answer the door. I can't think about it. But let's see what we can do.
Do you have a loudspeaker in your cruiser?
I'm pretty loud without a speaker.
Well, the ones, the ones you guys wouldn't let me use?
Yes.
Yeah.
I see that JP is on the call.
Okay.
On the, so maybe we should get some input from JP and his thoughts from the health officers' perspective.
If JP wants to, we can go there sometime this weekend.
Go on, John Paul. I see his name, but I don't hear him. Because, you know, there may be something he can do that.
What about going in for the dog?
Yes, thank you.
I'll find out if they have the dogs registered and whatnot tomorrow.
JP, the question has come up about, you've probably heard, the Belloc property up on Quarterline Road. And whether, as health officer, with Chief Dumas, you might be able to go up and do an inspection. Questions about sewage dumping on the property from the campers or the RVs that are there. And also needles, trash, and so on. Would, is that something you can do with the chief perhaps tomorrow?
I'd have to check on whether I can do it tomorrow. We certainly can get it in the next couple of days, but you should know that the town has no authority over the septic issues. The state has five people in different areas of the state that do the septic enforcement. I can certainly provide that information if somebody were to give me a call or give me an email. Because that complaint should come directly from the people affected.
So the person who smelled the raw sewage, the next-door neighbor should be in touch with you?
Yes, and I can give them the contact info for the state person.
Okay, would you, would you be willing to go up as health officer and see if there are any health violations up there?
For sure.
At least on the property?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, they're disheding the gray water onto the ground. Like, that's
If you, if, if it can be seen, that's the question.
Right.
Okay.
The state took that jurisdiction away from towns years ago. That's why we don't have it. The state oversees all wastewater. And so if you want to put in a septic system, you have to go through the state of the law.
Right.
But there are people out there, and maybe with some coordination with Chief Dumas and health officer John Paul, and we'll get somebody from the state, then could make some life difficult for those people.
Yes, I, I did make a complaint, not on this property, but I made it on another property, and there was a response within an hour. So they can, when they, when they know there's sewage being dumped, they can
Did you actually see the gray water being dumped out?
Well, I mean, I'm just assuming. I mean, he's smelling it, and there's campers, and there's people living in them.
We need more than an assumption. The smell helps.
But I mean, I just
The smell helps.
I mean, I mean, nowadays, most people have a camera right on them.
Yeah.
If you get a, if you get something.
Stay around that property too much.
I don't know why, but.
Might require a little surveillance and getting some information to
Could you identify yourself, please?
So my name is Caitlin Razanowski. I actually live in West Rutland, but I'm very close to that, and I've actually had three different incidents in the last, since May, of people stealing, trying to break into my cars. They stole my father's four-wheeler last week.
Is this at the property we're talking about?
Just down the road from them. This isn't personal. Personal property. We found somebody sleeping in our barn. You know, you can't tell me that it's not related to that house. I mean, I've lived up there for 30 years and never had this problem before.
What's your address?
I live on 130 Stone Ridge Lane in West Rutland off of Boardman Hill, so I'm about a mile, if that, from that residence.
Okay.
Um. My question is, and I don't know if it's even anything that can be done, but is there any kind of like cognitive eval that can be done to see if Mr. Belloc is of sound mind and making sound decisions? Because I, I just feel like he's not, and we are all affected.
We have been in contact with family members. I've spoken to him personally. If anyone knows Mr. Belloc, he gets, he's rather hard to get along with. I'm being kind. And most of his family members don't want anything to do with him at this point in times. He, he cries, he cries, he wants something done, and then something starts to get on, then he doesn't want it done. He's, he's just that guy. He limps around and does what he does, but he's of sound enough mind to be this way his whole life, so.
If you suspect there is, for example, elder abuse going on, there are, well, Karen would know how to report to various authorities. So there are folks who do look out for people being taken advantage, disadvantaged people, whether they're elders or not, and elders. So if you think that there is a case of elder abuse there, I don't have the number offhand, but there, there are authorities you can report to, and please, please do. We don't want
If you contact the police firm tomorrow, Lynn Galpo probably has those numbers we can do.
And they can begin a process, to your point, someone can begin a process of either a guardianship or just at least raising the question.
Well, I definitely make a guardianship.
Well, that's up to the judge and the court process.
Is that the same property we had the fire at?
Yes. Yeah.
Probably shouldn't have put it out.
Mary?
Yes, JP.
I do have the contact info for the Vermont Environmental Enforcement Officer.
Okay, people, get your pens out, get ready. And Bill, if you could take this down, please? Go ahead.
The gentleman's name is Patrick Lokes, L-O-W-K-E-S. And his number is 802-747-8127. Again, 802-747-8127.
Okay, and that's for the sewage, the wastewater, the gray water, the smell, those sorts of things?
Yes.
Okay. There is one. And you also heard the chief, if you see something, take a picture. If you see something, report it. Matt?
Question for the woman from West Rutland, that's incidents that you talked about, have those been reported or being investigated?
Actually, the first incident was in mid-May, and it was six o'clock in the morning, and I found somebody coming down my driveway, trying to break into our vehicles, which we proceeded to follow them down the road and caught them in a ditch. They fell in a ditch at her property and stayed there until the state police could come. But, you know, they didn't commit a crime because our vehicles were locked, and it's apparently perfectly legal to go onto somebody's property and try to open a vehicle. You know, so we were actually like, you know, astonished by this, but fortunately enough, my father came and he's like, hey, he did get into my vehicle, which is just down the road. So they were able to arrest him, only for him to be arrested a few hours later, I heard on the scanner, he was arrested again. You know, so career criminal, nothing's done. And then, so
You can blame our legislature for that, because they changed the rules. Trust me. I'm as frustrated as you are.
So then, about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, my father went out to his barn at like seven o'clock in the morning and heard something rustling around, thought it was an animal, and he looked in, and there, there was a gentleman curled up in a wall, sleeping with my dad's little Mr. Buddy heater on him, and his dog curled up there, and he's like, oh, well, I was, I got dropped off down the road, and I didn't have a place to stay.
No, he didn't. We saw him on the road that night.
I just thought I could stay here for the night. And then last Sunday morning, my mom was in her house and looked out at our barn and happened to see somebody driving the four-wheeler out of their closed, shed is closed, doors were closed. They went into a shed, took the four-wheeler, drove it off.
Okay.
So
And you reported that as well?
Yes, and we were actually able to recover that, so.
And do you know, it's the police have identified a residence of these individuals, or are they considered homeless, or?
No, but they're not able to tell me who they, you know. I, I specifically asked the state trooper with the first incident. I said, did he come from the Belloc house? And he's like, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. People who are closer into the Belloc house, anything that you folks want to add? We've given you some contact information. Please, every time something occurs, call, and
I know one of, I know one of the people here who walks there every morning, he was afraid to walk there because of some of the traffic on the road and things that he's seen. It was wasn't safe to be out there at this point.
My wife's afraid of the dogs. My wife used to walk. Three dogs they've got.
Yeah.
They also have two people living there. I've seen their mug shots.
Eric's
On local news.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, they're walking up and down the road all the time.
Black, and the other's Colleen.
Yep.
Will stop a freight train.
Yep.
They'll go to, they'll go to Belloc's house, and then like the one guy, he goes to Belloc's, and then he'll go down Boardman Hill, and he goes down to the rec. And I literally sat there one night at my son's baseball game watching, and I said, oh, that car from Belloc's.
We need to also hear from people who are closer in, okay? Bill, if you could make a note to call our animal control officer and see about those dogs, whether they're registered?
Yep.
Okay, please? All right, that's two. Chief, what's, what are your patrols like up there? I don't know specifics, but how often?
We've got a plan that we want to implement here.
Okay.
Hoping for more police presence. I've seen you guys driving by my house, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we can, we're not quite so busy down at the plaza anymore, so I guess we'll be busy on Boardman Hill or the Quarterline Road.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right.
Not only that, they go up on the dead, they go up on the dirt section of Quarterline Road, and there's a pull-up there, and there's dozens of needles there.
That's horrible.
Okay.
I, it's, uh, we've gotten, Shelley Lutz has called us, it's right on the edge of the town in the Town of Clarence, I think it is, their property.
My property's up there.
Yeah, we're unfortunately, we don't live up there, so if you folks see something, if you call our, our office, if we're there, we're working, we'll go look at it. We'll try to find them. We'll do our best.
And if they're not there, leave a message with the state police. Because that's the way the system works. We'll hear about it, but we need, we need the numbers too, okay?
If you call, you gotta call VSP Dispatch, and if we're working, they'll, they'll dispatch us to the call. They are a dispatcher.
Another thing I'd like to add is that I had a survey done eight years ago. Tried to tell Dave where the line was. Got all pissed off, then he pulled the pin up.
Oh, well, there's
Yeah.
Pete?
So I'm getting ready to
That's illegal, right?
I've already told Peter. I'm getting, I, I have somebody lined up now to do another survey, and when I have it done, I'm calling you guys to be up there to watch it.
What, at the ground? Did you see him pulling it up?
I saw him pulling it up.
Take a picture.
Take a picture. I think it's, I think it's the slagboard.
I don't even have it now.
All right, anything, any questions from the Select Board, any other ideas of things that we can do to help with this situation? I think, okay, you folks in the neighborhood, you, you had your say?
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of young families with young kids up there, so I, that's my concern.
Yeah, there are.
And I know there's several. I teach at school. I know how many are up and down the road.
It's, it's not safe for them to drive. If you have a baby and you carry it, you're going to
They drive right through the stop sign constantly.
Yeah, you can't.
Fly through it.
Okay.
They're even doing that on Boardman Hill. I mean, I have a shop up there. I do hair.
I've been to your house before, yes.
Yeah, driveway, yes. I was like, what are you doing here? So, yeah, I mean, they fly. It's
Yeah.
I don't know. It's just out of control for sure.
We have some ability now. We've got a full complement of police officers, so we can do a little more with traffic enforcement. And for the next two weeks or so, our school resource officer is still available. Then we'll go back into the school, but so, and the chief has a plan, and when he says he has a plan, he has one, so. All right.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions, any other information we can, if you think of it afterwards, and you all think of, everybody thinks of stuff I should have said, or I should have asked, please stay in touch with us. You can email the Select Board. Our addresses are on there. I just live down the hill from you folks, so I know the area, and I have concerns too. You can get in touch with Bill here if you need information for any, from any one of us. Stay in touch with us, and do let us know what's going on up there, and keep the pressure on us, law enforcement, and the property owner, okay? Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other members of the public? Anyone on the Zoom meeting who wish to be heard about any other matters that are not otherwise on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move along to our agenda. We'll start with Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Oh, it's so empty now.
Thank you, JP. That was good.
Okay, have a good night.
Thanks, God.
That worked out well. Good evening. How are you all?
Hi, good.
Um, the pool is, you know, very busy. And things are moving along nicely. We have signage up, and we'll put it on the website as far as when our last day is. Been in contact with a couple of the vendors that are coming down for town-wide celebration. So that's all kind of moving in the right direction. So we're good to go. That's, that's like a week ago. That's less, what, coming up in less than a week and a half. We have our volunteers from school coming. I have enough lifeguards to guard it, which is great, because they're running off to college and playing sports.
Sports are going to be an issue that day too, I think. Hmm, sports are going to still be an issue that day.
They are, but I do have three that are good to go for this, that short amount of time. We're closing at three that day because I don't, I just don't have people. But we will be there to staff it for the swim part, depending on, it's a good day. Other than that, fall's starting to roll around, starting to get things done. And get things ready for fall season here coming up. We did have our committee meeting, which a lot of the stuff is around the committee meeting. So if, I don't know if Matt wants to recap that, or I can recap that, that's fine.
We do have some
Yep, we do have some information, yep. So we did narrow So we did narrow down and, uh, essentially finalize, right? Not jump in if I am, if I've overstepped. Um, finalized our. Uh, volunteer slash coaches adult, um, background policy.
Okay, and I think everyone has a copy on their desk.
And thank you to Bill for plopping that off real quick today. Appreciate that, Bill.
Matt, any, I know we talked about this before, um, some changes were likely made.
Yep, so we've. Clarified some things around, you know, the scope of who this applies to.
Well, that's, I mean, that's really the issue throughout is this is gonna apply to adult employees and to. Volunteer coaches, so it tends to not apply this to referees who are. You know, they're working, they're showing up to work games, they're not, you know, working directly with the kids, not going in the lockers and stuff like that. And likewise, we can't, we can't do background checks on the minors that work for the town, so. This is gonna be for adult employees and, um. Volunteer coaches. And, um, so we just try to make it consistent throughout, but in terms of. What it's addressing and, uh, how the process is gonna work. So, so, you know, the. In terms of the second section here on disqualification. There's language in bold there that says, you know, if there's some extenuating circumstance that can be considered by the rec director, but. You know, otherwise these convictions are gonna disqualify people from working with youth.
Okay. Um, and the school, this is the adapt, adapted from the school policy?
So I was in touch with the, the school, uh, this is from a couple of different, this is from Brandon, this is from VLTC. This is, it's a hodgepodge of different people that we have created our own. Um, school, it was in contact with school, school has two forms. That we will fill out, that the volunteers will fill out, um, and then a fingerprint, uh, fingerprint check. Um, so we will have two forms that they will have to fill out, which are the same as what the school requires. So, and they're from the state of Vermont, forms.
Um, is there a recommendation from the rec committee?
We're recommending adoption.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Been made and seconded to adopt the policy, uh, background check policy for the rec department. Um, and as presented and on our desks, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, that's four, zero, no abstentions, so I'm gonna sign mine. And. Pass it to Joe and then we'll pass it on. Okay, what's next?
Um, we talked about, uh, replacing the mower over at Dewey, um, which is a quote that you have, um, on your desk. And we went through that and, uh. Committee voted to proceed with that, um, as a recommendation.
So again, I'll, for sake of getting into discussion, I'll move to approve these.
So can I put a fly in the ointment? Where do we do that at?
Let's get the motion on the table. Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of a mower, um, the John Deere quote. And now we're open for discussion, Joe.
So Mike, how many mowers are up at Northwood, two?
There are two.
And you have, this is a tractor with a loader, right, over here, it's a different.
This is a tractor with loader and attachment.
So the suggestion that I would make is that instead of purchasing a third mower. Because you're doing all the mowing, right?
Correct.
Right, so you're not, it's not like it's mowing is being done simultaneously.
Correct.
All right, so what I would suggest, and this would be instead of purchasing a new mower. That you think about selling the one we have over at center, the one with the loader and stuff. Purchase a trailer sufficient to move a mower and then you could just use a ranger and tow them back and forth and just have two. Mowers. It would cut down your maintenance costs, cuts down stuff, and that way you could save a little bit of money or something else that, you know. Instead of having the mower there, it's not being used when you're not there, so rather than replace it, I would just. You know, get into a rotation of replacing the two you have. And, um, that way, if you needed extra help, you've got two mowers and you could hire somebody to help you out. And you could run one more back, I mean, a small trailer, I don't know, probably about three thousand dollars maybe. If you, you can get one sufficient to handle the mowers, they probably weigh about a ton.
We ha, we actually have two rec mowers, uh, rec trailers in our inventory that the highway uses.
Right, so would they be sufficient, Dave, to move that zero turn?
That's what we use when we do sidewalks.
Okay, so I, I'm just thinking of saving you a little bit of money, little bit of maintenance, um, you have the trailer, I don't know if the ranger's got a hitch on it. Or if we, it does, um, do those mowers have, those trailers have brakes or no?
That, small trailer does not, the bigger trailer does, but.
You know, and, and, and this is just my thoughts, it's, I'm not trying to, but. We could save about eleven, cause if you've already got a trailer, then you really could save about eleven thousand dollars. You could sell the other mower and put that money in your depreciation fund and, and, and still being the same. And I don't think it'll affect your operation any.
No, just the fact of trailering it back and forth, um.
Yeah, it's a little different, but you have to drive over there anyway.
Correct, and.
So you would just hook the ranger up and go.
Yeah, um, in that regard, a lot of times I just drive over in my truck.
Right, but, you know, but I'm just, you know, I, I kind of watch what the city does and they have. Couple of trailers and they, they just move them field to fields rather than have one house at every, it, it's a little more economical for us and if it. Doesn't hurt your feelings and it doesn't make your life any more difficult, I, I was just thinking that, you know, is a thought.
Yeah, I mean, and that, that's fine, um, it's just always been that way, so I guess there's nothing that says that you can't make that change.
Yeah.
Um.
And, and that kind of cuts your inventory, you know, it just makes it a little less maintenance, you know, you just keep the other two up. And if we wear one of those out a little faster, well, you know, maybe you replace them, I don't know, every ten years, maybe we'll have to go to eight or something, but. You can get into a rotation where you would replace one of the two you have up there every so many years. I don't, I don't know if you have a replacement in rotation thought about yet.
No, we're not. The first one that we ever purchased was in two thousand thirteen, we're still running it, I use it for. What I would call, what you would call more, more, probably more of your challenging hayfields. Is what we use it for and it works perfect for a lot of those.
Are they both the same size or are they different?
They're both the same size. The ones that got a higher engine.
Yeah, I mean.
A more powerful engine.
Right, I, I, I'm just looking out for your, I was just, you know, I thought about this after you talked to us two weeks ago and I, and I talked to Kurt a little bit about it and. He thought, you know, that he kind of came up with the idea that maybe we ought to look at just trailering them one back and forth and save the town some money, so.
I mean, and, and I'm, and I might get to that, I probably would probably just continue and drive this into the ground. And then when it's done, I'll just leave it there, I mean.
Well, you could realize if it's, if it has value now.
Right, and that's why I was looking at it that, from that perspective is.
I would sell it.
When, when, when we get rid of it, we usually replace it with another one, so that was my way of thinking.
Right.
Um, because of the value that they were giving it to us for the value that we paid for it.
Right.
Um, and I totally understand what you're saying.
Right, if you advertise that for sale, that's a nice little tractor with a loader on it and a mid-mount mower. You might realize more for it than what they're telling you.
Oh, of course, they're gonna turn around and sell it.
Well, yeah, because, um, we recently purchased a twenty-four horse mid-mount coyote. With a sixty-inch deck and a detachable hydro, you know, bucket loader and paid almost ten for it. So you could advertise that for ten. Take that money, put into your fund, that's, you know, and then you'd have that there, so when one of these others goes. You know, and you could run those and then come get yourself into a rotation. Um, I, I, I'm just trying to see how, you know, a efficient way, cause if you had somebody mowing. You know, if you had to have, these things were being done simultaneous, it might not be as good, but since you're. Love mowing so much.
Oh, yeah.
If you're okay with that, that would be what I would suggest.
It's just for me, it was more of a, like it has been a convenience, but before there were more than one person doing it, so, and that's just a coordination part.
Part of my, yeah, well, so to that point, I mean, I hesitate to make decisions that. Are based on the personnel situation we have right now. Um, right now Mike's doing all the mowing at both places. But that wasn't the plan going into the season and may or may not be the plan going forward, depending on how well this year goes, I guess, and. Or what we do in our next budget.
But we still have two mowers, Matt, but he still has two.
Does have two, one of.
So you could always have. Well, well.
The old brush mower that's getting used for rugged jobs.
I, I'm just saying there, there, we have two and, and buying a third mower, I, I, I don't think it's. Cost effective to Mike's budget to have the upkeep and maintenance of a third mower.
Which is another point is Mike's, we, we did talk about this and Mike's made a point that up until, with the exception of one recent event of. Maintenance fortunately has been covered in house.
Yeah.
He's learning to do a lot of it. Um, putting a lot of hours on these mowers, I don't know if you know the numbers on that, but I mean, there's a lot of grass cutting.
There's a lot that we cut now that we never did before.
Right, that's why I'm saying if you get it, so if you figure, I don't know what the life of a zero turn is, but it ought to be ten years, I would suggest.
Well, like I said, we're on the two thousand thirteen and it's two thousand twenty-five, so it's twelve years.
Years out of that, so you might be better served.
The old one.
That was the new one.
The new one was two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so you, so, so they're ten years apart, roughly, in purchase time, so what I'm getting at is you would. I feel would be better served taking the older mower. And replace that next season and sell this more in central and replace the other one, then you'll have a twenty-three and a twenty-six. Or you can get them, or even space them out a little more, so you get into replacing one every five years. Each, one would be, they run them ten years, replace one every five years or something.
Uh, like I said, I, I'm open to a lot, this is more on what we had and.
Right.
Like I don't know, like Matt was saying, I don't know if I'm going to continue with that, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem.
In next year, but.
It's not an urgent need, it was more like, okay, this is, this could happen now, we got a decent price for it, that was my rationale.
That, that's, those are, those are my thoughts.
Oh, Matt, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. I would look at having two, that way you could be, you could hire, you know, if you get, say we get a really miserable. Stretch of weather and you get way behind, you could always get somebody coming, then you got two mowers and two people. Um, but I, I just don't quite see it as being cost effective to have one over there just for that field. Um, you know, and we already have the trailer, so there's no additional cost, you could easily load it and move it, um. And, and I notice that's what other rec departments do, they just move. That, that's my suggestion.
We do have a motion on the floor, what's your pleasure at this point? And we have one select board member missing.
Not that this isn't a good price, okay? That, that's not, I'm not object.
I mean, things are only gonna become more expensive as they go and like. I'm, I'm looking at it from a couple of different perspectives too, when I, when I look at it, like the two thousand thirteen, when that goes. We're not gonna get a lot of money for that.
No.
So that, that, that money right there, that nineteen thousand, the new one, when I traded in. Would, is it, let's say I, I would go on your, how you were doing and if I did sell that and got eight. But running that as long as it, if it, if they gave me three grand for it. Then I'm, I'm, I'm spending almost the same amount of money if I chase that kind of in a way to, that, that's my only. Looking at it from that way, things are not gonna get cheaper, cause when we bought that two thousand thirteen. I mean, uh, maybe it was twelve. I mean, you, we know prices are.
Fifteen, John Deere.
Right, so he was talking the, the two thousand thirteen zero turn that we currently have, that will be replaced eventually at some point.
And one is a tractor, there, you know, one's a loader, uh.
So the one at Dewey over there is a tractor with a underneath deck. A bucket on the front, a removable bucket.
Four-wheel driver tool.
It is four-wheel drive, it is diesel.
Yeah.
We got it in two thousand fifteen when we replaced the one that was over there originally.
That's the one you would trade in.
That, yeah, cause it's, that's the one we would trade in.
The other.
But if you put, if you sold that and you got eight or, well, we'll say you got eight thousand and that went into your depreciation fund, when you go to trade. The thirteen and you've got that eight thousand, yeah, the new one would, might be more than the eighteen thousand they're at for now, but. We would still be maintaining one less machine and, and you would end up with two identical machines. And I think you could realize more than the eight for it if you sold it yourself, advertise it for sale.
Another point I was gonna make about personnel earlier is, you know, the city's got a whole crew of people with, I assume diverse skillsets, we have one guy.
Right, but.
Who may be comfortable trailering, but I don't really wanna make that part of the, I mean, it's probably not that big a deal.
He doesn't appear to be that he mechanically challenged.
My point is, I'm not sure you wanna make that like a job requirement going forward, just because we made an equipment decision now, when we've already. We've always had this particular piece of equipment at that field, we're not really making a change.
We're not making a change, Matt, but we're spending money that I don't think we need to spend. Because one person right now can't run three mowers and this, I'm not belittling Mike or anything, but you can't physically do three jobs. So even if we had to hire somebody, two mowers would be sufficient. Um. I, I'm just thinking of a way to just make a little more, little less maintenance, a little less expense, a little less. Depreciation expenditures down the road and just because it's always been this way, doesn't mean it has to stay that way. Um, that, that's just, that's my opinion and like I said, that was, Kurt and I had talked about this a little bit, I'm. Sorry he's not here tonight, but we discussed this a little bit and we thought this might be a good way to go and, and just trailer one back and forth. Pretty easy to load, pretty easy to hitch down. Um, we have the equipment, so we don't have to buy anything else, I didn't realize we already had the trailers. Um, and that, and that ranger will handle that just fine.
Hey, we have a pending motion. What's your pleasure?
Well, you also just handed us a capital thing that we haven't reviewed yet, so. Um, and it's just raises another question, which is what was the plan with the ranger ultimately and is it used for any, what do you use that for?
Well, I use the ranger when I can, I mean, I don't bring it back and forth to home, so if I drive there. From home, then I pull it out of the garage and like I was driving around today to pick up supplies and chemicals. So. I do drive it, um. But, you know, like I said, I drive to work and then I, if I have to, I hop in that and then drive around to get stuff.
Is that, what, what's the origin of the ranger? I mean, is that something?
Purchased in two thousand two, three, four, we used it for forest fires. The fire department decided to not replace it, but to keep one of the three fifties.
So is that something that even makes sense to replace?
That ranger right now would bring us probably, I think we paid nine thousand dollars for it when we bought it. And if you advertise that for sale right now, you could probably get. Ten, twelve, it's a, they're, 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 they're hard to come by, little, those four-door rangers.
Fifty-eight thousand miles on that.
Right, and it was maintained, it's like any fire department piece of equipment. They, they're well maintained and then Mike got it, so there was just traded between departments.
Okay, so right now we have a twenty-plus year old ranger.
Yeah.
Ultimately, I mean, if it dies. Is there any reason why we would be replacing that truck?
Well, other than me using my personal truck, which I don't agree with.
What are your plans for the ranger when it does die?
Wait, 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 can, can I interject here? I mean. We've made the fire department come up with a vehicle replacement schedule for the trucks, we made the police department. Come up with a vehicle replacement schedule for the cruisers. And now we're tossing pickup truck with mower with, you know. I'm not seeing a replacement schedule and I think I'd really like to see that.
Okay, yeah, so I, on part of my. Plan, which you do not have yet, cause I just shared it with committee, which I went through first. And it's still being created is replacement of equipment.
Okay.
I.e. the ranger, like at what point do I hang on to that ranger and keep using that ranger? Yes, it is a twenty-year-old vehicle, yes, it doesn't really go out in the winter time, it sits inside, so. But if I'm hauling stuff around left and right, and how much money am I gonna continue to put into it? Being that it is old, hmm?
Have you had any maintenance issues with it to speak of since you've taken over it? Have you had any maintenance issues with it to speak of since you've taken over it?
Yeah, we I spent. Hmm, we spent probably eight or nine hundred bucks on it so far for the shifting column. And when it got inspected, needed a brand new catalytic converter. Um, it'll eventually need shocks and stuff like that.
Kinda, you kinda grew into a piece of equipment.
Right. I was I was gifted a piece of equipment because I would be driving around in my truck. So I was forward thinking in my plan.
Yep, back to.
And now we're wasting time.
I would feel a whole lot more comfortable if I saw the replacement schedule from the rec department.
So I think it was my motion, right? So
It was your motion.
I guess I would be in light of all this conversation, the reason I brought this up is because are we talking about maintaining a truck so that we can now tow a trailer, right? So I guess I I'd like to go back to committee again and talk i- i- in holistically about the capital, you know, replacement schedule. Um, so we're talking about these things things together because I think they're they're joined.
And when we did buy that.
Sounds like a motion to table. Is that what?
Yeah, that's what that would do.
Perfectly, okay.
Sharon, is that a second? Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to table discussion um, on this. So Bill, this needs to be added to the next or at least down the bottom in case the committee wants to take it off the table at our next meeting.
I just have one question.
Okay.
We're talking about transferring it from one area to another. Whose truck are we using?
And that was part of.
No, it's it's the rec's truck now.
Right. It does belong to the rec department. Okay. It used to be the old fire truck.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Not fire truck truck, the pickup truck.
You know, there was no money change hands. It was just.
Gifted.
Huh?
Gifted.
Gifted from the fire department to rec. I mean, it's one one town pocket to the other town pocket. But Mike's depreciation fund and Mike's whole rec thing never had a truck. So all of a sudden, now we've got another thing. And it gives you greater flexibility, a great, but it also creates some expenses.
We need to vote on tabling.
Sure.
Okay. Um, all in favor of tabling this motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zip.
Okay. Uh, the next thing that we had that we talked about was the replacement doors uh, over at Dewey in the bathroom. So, long story short, called two different people. Um, one person really didn't get back to me and then did get back to me and then didn't be any idea on a price. Um, or a timetable. Um, whereas the other person I got in touch with and said I wasn't happy with the quote and they re quoted to do everything um, for the doors, uh, which is a, I'm not gonna mention name, but um, right now, just for us to discussion. So we talked about that and replacing those doors because they need to be replaced. They are going to be an issue. And then the boys over there are gonna have to take care of why people are breaking in and using those bathrooms over there. Um, so this has been going on for a couple of months. And we talked about the uh, the quote that you have in front of you um, until you mentioned that nice little thing beforehand, which also could if if I provide doors, I mean, that's a possibility.
We could maybe put them ourselves. I don't know. Um, I need to know what size the doors you're placing. And this doesn't tell us that information.
I I don't know. That would be be going over and measuring the size of the doors.
So because I think that was off the record, I think that happened before the meeting.
It did.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So when the public safety building was built, nine doors were delivered that weren't right for the building. And
New?
Brand new, on a skid. And there was some other work that had to be done and I was there and Gary said, if you want them, take them because the manufacturer won't take them back. The town was not charged, V M S was not charged. They just provided the right doors. So I took them home and I have nine doors. They're metal. Um, I think some were for the police side of the thing, so they might even be heavier. Um, some, but there's nine doors. So we have, we have the potential to have two doors that might work. Um, getting them put up. Would have, I I just think that six thousand one hundred and eighty one dollars and eighty eight cents for two doors is an awful lot of money. It 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 and the fact that you could only get one person to bid on this also bothers me. Um, so the town does have the right to refuse any and all bids or quotes, so I think we should, I know they need to be done and we need to get it done. Be, does this, does this have a expiration date? Do you know?
No, I just, I I told the group that the the person that we were, they tabled it until we would talk about it at this meeting and then I would get back to them whether it was a ye or an ay.
This does say all quotes proposals are valid for thirty days and this was July twenty eighth that it was generated. So we've got until August twenty eighth. Yeah.
So I I just think maybe we ought to just do a little research. We have a couple, those doors don't have windows, so and we could get locked. Maybe we'd have what you need right there and it would just be maintenance or, you know, cost of labor to put them up.
I mean, I can find out what the doors are.
Work with you to look into this.
I can work with um, that group because they are also the lock and all that stuff, which
Right.
needs to all be consistent with our locks.
Right.
Yeah, that we have in the rec, which are all the same key system.
Right.
Yep.
So we have this quote and it sounds like we may be generating another quote that's for no, the installation and the lock on this our own provided doors if they fit.
Well, who's gonna do that? The installation and the lock and
Oh, I thought you were saying this group.
No, what I what I would, what I would potentially do is if the doors are the size, I could ask this group that you have in front of you. I say, I have these brand new doors. They fit the size.
Right.
Can you put them in with the, and then that would reduce the price cuz we're not paying for the doors. So I can go back to them if the doors are the size.
And I don't know if these are.
Yeah, that's kind of what I said.
Okay, I thought I thought you.
I don't know if these are a pre hung door. I'm assuming this is a pre hung door with the casings. And the whole set.
No, there is no casing required. It's doors.
Just the doors.
That's why the price went back down because we went back and they were like, no, you don't need the frame.
Okay.
Okay.
So that that, and you don't know what's on there for doors now, do you?
If they're.
Metal doors are on. But are they three hinged doors or are they?
I couldn't remember if they were three. I'm assuming they're three, but.
I'm gonna go look tomorrow.
Okay.
I can go look when I run up.
We all agree that there's that we kind of put this on next meetings agendas to give Joey and Mike the chance to see what size those doors are that
If we have two doors, it's brand new doors. There's no sense buying any doors.
I just don't know what the size is and whether this.
And that's fine.
And and if.
Bill, the next meeting?
Thank you.
That'll be the twenty sixth, so this this will still be good.
Green folder.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's fine. If we have doors.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Pay for door.
And maybe I'm out of touch with reality here, but I just, you know, I know this is the locks, the labor, this is everything.
I, that's why I went the first time, like this is.
Yeah, you go buy a door and you're thinking.
And they're like, well, the doors are very expensive. So I mean, it would be interesting to see what the doors were cost that they ate, that ate the doors that you have and how much of those doors were.
Yeah.
Would be interesting to see what they cost.
From what I understood, the manufacturer said it would cost more to get those nine doors shipped back than they were worth. So they just ate the
And it's scrap metal perhaps, but we put a bathroom door on and it cost us absurd amount of money, so.
Yeah.
You know, and they'll have, these are not, yeah, they'll they'll need to be painted, but that's not the end of the world either.
Okay, and then I don't think uh, the only thing we talked about was I did show them um, my capital plan for the next five years going forward for them to look at and we can review and add to what I wanted to put of what I've already added to it. If you ever want, I can share it with Bill. I have my capital plans for the past ten years, what was done and and checked off on all those boxes. I can share that with Bill if I haven't already. I'll do it again. Um, and then we talked about prices for next year at the pool.
Okay.
As far as uh, increasing non resident prices substantially.
Anything else that we should be voting on this evening? Hey, any questions for the rec director?
I beat him up enough. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thanks very much.
No problemo.
Okay, pencil back.
All right, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Do you order breakfast? Good evening. Um, I don't really have a lot because uh, East Pittsburgh Road and Ruth Avenue got paved. And we've spent the last three weeks there. Uh, we did Ruth Avenue yesterday, got that done. And uh, we probably got another day up on East Pittsburgh Road. We had to relocate all the mailboxes. Uh, edges, driveways, uh, on and on. And it was rather warm, just in case nobody happened to notice. Um, so we got that. The coating thing that you wanted to talk about, Mary?
Yes. Um, so that ties into, and Bill wasn't here for the little flurry, but after you, after you left, um, there was an email from yeah, no, wait, no, let me make sure I've got the right one. Uh, we'll start with Wenzel Carrington and the um, easement up on Town Line Road. And there was, everything was pretty much ready to go. Um, we needed to approve as a town, the payment of the agreed upon sum of fifteen thousand dollars. And we will be reimbursed some from the League of Cities and Towns. So, the question was what fund and Carrie's on, so we can check with her. What fund that money should come out of? So the check could be cut. You remember there was some urgency because these folks were moving.
Right.
Right. So we wanted to get everything in place, right?
Did we get all their signatures and all that?
I do believe we did. Um, I've got the easement deed and I've got, and it's the settlement agreement is signed by the town as well as them, and they've signed the easement deed and the transfer tax return um, has been done. So I think that is now all set. I can give you the paperwork that I have. Um, Kevin Brown sent it to the League of Cities and Towns to request our share of the reimbursement. Now, fifteen thousand dollars, Carrie, you know, flagged this appropriately and said, where, what account do we take the money out of? And because we really wanted to get the check cut and be, and we didn't have a chance to have this meeting first. I said, find something in highway and we we ended up with um, I think it was engine, your engineering account.
Oh, good, cuz that's hardly over budget.
Right, right, right. Um, so with the understanding, we were gonna come to the board at our next meeting, which is now, and tell the board um, that this was a temporary measure and we would be receiving half of that money back anyway. And it really should come out of not that fund, but another fund. So am I, am I explaining this? Okay, Carrie? I I think, okay, here she comes.
Yeah, you explained it um, exactly how we discussed it.
Okay, so there isn't a, um, the capital fund.
That would be, that would be a logical place.
That would be a logical place.
Take the, so it'll be roughly seventy five hundred coming back from the League of Cities and Town and the remaining seventy five hundred would come out of the capital improvement.
And that sounds like a motion to me.
I'll I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. This is just to clear up the housekeeping. Um, seventy five hundred back from the League of Cities and Towns combined with seventy five hundred from the capital fund will cover the fifteen thousand dollar check that we're writing. And so we will not drain your um, en- engineering fund.
Oh, it's already drained, but it.
Okay.
It won't be as big a goose egg.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are people clear on the motion, what we're doing? Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion is four in favor. Um, and one abstain. Okay. That takes care of this, Bill. This is going in your, if you, even if you already have it, it's going in the green folder.
All together, yep.
Okay.
So that clears up our association with these folks as far as we know.
As far as we know.
And hopefully that the new owner will understand what they're buying and what they got.
Well, if that's why we wanted to get it in and recorded in the town clerk's office, so.
I I I mean, this has been going on for quite a while and.
And the reason this this mess came up was because former road commissioner thought he had an agreement with the landowner and the landowner died.
Yeah.
Yes. So we want to make sure this time everything is appropriately in place.
So the next box culvert's getting scrutinized real well, right?
Well, speaking of scrutinizing, you will recall that you folks authorized me to sign the Casella construction contract for the South End Sewer Project.
Yep.
Um, I got an email as soon as Bill left. Right, and contingent upon our attorney okaying it, which our attorney did do. Um, and then we got an email from someone at Casella saying, hey, there's no attestation. Anyway.
Lawyer word. What? Lawyer word.
It's a lawyer word and I questioned whether, they wanted a notary to sign to acknowledge my signature.
Okay.
So we we got Kevin sent, Bill, Bill wasn't around. No fault to Bill. So we got it sent by Kevin, the signature page. I took it into Carrie. I signed a blank in front of her as select board chair and she, you know, took my acknowledgement. So we're all set on that. That is also going in the green folder.
Does that need, anything need to happen with that?
Um, just put it all together so that we have a complete contract, which includes the attestation. So somebody someday doesn't say. Um, it was sent.
I had to go to Otter Creek.
Yeah, that's right. It went to Otter Creek. And I think you were, were you copied on it? Okay.
So we're we're, it it's gone where it needs to go. This is just for our record.
And and the contract did start date was July fifteenth anyway for the South End Sewer Project. I don't know where we are on that, but you might wanna talk about it.
Well, so seeing how we're on the subject of easements, I don't remember if I mentioned this last time, but we have an easement from Days Inn.
Good.
That's done. Um, and I'm, I had to chase down the new owners of the four seventy four Holiday Drive property, which is uh, Sports Clips, A T and T, Miracle Air, that whole thing. Um, I sent them, the guy an email. Bill and I kind of tag teamed this thing. And I sent him an email yesterday. He sent me an email back today with a bunch of questions that I sent off to Otter Creek Engineering cuz it was like, it's like, what are the boundaries of the construction? Where is it gonna, how's it gonna affect us and everything? Um, so I sent that out this afternoon. I'm waiting to hear back from either Robert. Either Robert's gonna reply to them directly, or he's just gonna send me this stuff and I'll reply to him. So we're working our way there. The other one that is the owner of the property that's uh, Taco Bell and Hampton Inn. I've called them several times and I'm getting no replies. So I think we're gonna have to send some kind of a letter in the mail or something. They're they're in Florida. So this is gonna be some transaction, but uh, so we're moving forward to that anyway. I, and I asked Robert in the email, where are we with the state permit? Because I haven't heard anything about that. I know it was submitted. I just haven't heard anything, so.
As far as you know, they were on board with.
As far as I know, they were, yeah, they weren't gonna bucket it all.
No.
That I know of.
Okay.
Any I know probably the boring company is the most crucial part of this, so I don't know what they're, do we know anything about their scheduling and?
I don't because we're waiting to get this contract thing back to to Casella and I haven't heard anything about that. But with us having the Days Inn and we're only gonna go to the the green belt between seven and Cop John, we can actually get that going as soon as they're ready to go. And we just gotta work on these other two pieces to pull it all together on the other side.
Put the sleeve across. From Route seven across the green area and Cop John Drive, that's all open cut.
Right, right.
So at some point, we'll probably have to put something out there that Cop John Drive is, once you know dates, when it's gonna be closed. Cuz there's gonna be a lot of, well, that one afternoon.
It's not gonna, it's not really gonna be an issue because there're gonna be equipment everywhere and you're not gonna be able to get down there anyway. They're gonna have a hole in the road as big as this room.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, so.
Okay.
And then the one other thing that you had mentioned was uh, where to take the uh, the, oh, the thirty K from the engineering of this.
Right.
So Carrie had mentioned it to me. She sent me an email about it. Um, so I know we're kind of marginal, maybe possibly on the money in the sewer fund for this. So it's been, that thirty K has come out of my engineering line and I'm kind of okay with that for now. And if we come in short of maxed out on the sewer fund, then we can just recode it then. But I really don't wanna take it out of there now. And then we come up twenty five grand short on on the sewer fund.
You don't wanna take it out of.
Out of, out of sewer.
Okay.
We'll just leave it where it is and when we get to that point, if there's money left in the sewer fund, then we'll just.
Okay, because logically that is associated with a sewer project.
It is, yeah. I, I agree. And I think that's where it should come from, but just to. A little, little thirty thousand dollar insurance policy.
But if it ain't there, it could be hard to take it out of it.
Be tough.
Yeah.
A little bit tough.
Um, Carrie, are you okay with that for the time being?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so.
We got a plan.
We got a plan. All right, so we completed, we were going to get that, we were going to get that money out of that fund anyway, one way or the other.
Yeah, one way or another, it's coming.
Yeah, okay.
And then the only other one last thing I have is I'm, I'm working on the spray thing. Plug your ears if you'd like. Um, to answer your question, um, the uh. The two four D is the application rate is. Point six six pints. Per one point three three acres. I got to put a whole lot of it more together, but I got that information today, so I wanted to pass that along because then you can let that just eight.
Banville and two forty.
Yeah. It's not a lot.
No, no, that doesn't, and it, I think parsnip is quite susceptible to herbicides.
It is.
Except for the seed, as you said.
Right, the, the, the killer is.
Yep.
And this is, this is going to be the ongoing dilemma and problem is anything that's not sprayed. On private property, one plant goes to seed and it's got several hundred things. About ten percent of those will germinate and that will last up to three years.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and I feel more broke as I was cleaning up one area with poison.
Right, and, and, and I will just put this out there for anybody. Once it goes to seed.
Yep.
Leave it alone. Because if you go mow it, now it's on your mower and you bring it with you and you leave it everywhere you go. So this is, this is a voice of, yeah, experience. So I may not make it.
It's like mill foil on your boat.
Yeah, so anyway.
We actually did look at um another option that was not a herbicide. We were looking at a steam machine.
Oh, yeah.
But the problem with that is it, it, it will kill the upper portion, but it will not get into the ground and kill the, the taproot.
Right.
Which goes down.
You ever pulled one out?
No.
They, they, when, I pull them out of the field because. I try not to let that spread. So if you get them before they go to seed, it, it looks like um a person. Or carrot, it has a root about that long. If you cut them. To kill them, you have to cut them three inches below the surface. You have to dig down and cut them off to kill them. If you cut them at ground level when they're green and not flowered out. They just grow back.
Yeah.
Yeah, the steamer will, won't affect the taproot. It'll leave it there. So. The information that we got was you would have to use throughout a summer season, you would have to spray ten to twelve. Times. Yeah, just to, that's just to keep it here, that, and it's going to come up in the spring. So that's, that's kind of not really an option.
I don't believe it grows back from the root though. So once that plant dies, then the ones that come up the next year only come from the seeds.
Yeah, so it's an annual.
It comes from this, they don't, they don't grow from the roots. Yeah, but you can check with Brad at laws because he's got this Bible. And, and so I sat with him and asked him how to get rid of this. And, and he read page after page and with you and the. That's why I knew the banville and two four D works on it. Um. But.
So we shouldn't be doing anything this year anyway, because this, it's.
No, we won't this year. It's too late now. By the time we get this all put.
You would have to spray it in the spring. I, I think though, once you kill.
They said, once they come up and they get the leaves on them, you gotta let them get up. A foot or something, and then spray them. That'll knock them back. And then the, they're going to come with, the next generation's going to come behind them. And then you gotta spray them again, probably in the fall. So it'd be like a spring, fall thing.
You watch, yeah.
Or late summer.
So we, we sprayed a hayfield. I had it sprayed the middle of May. They killed it off pretty good and then we harvested the field. And then we did double duty because we were trying to get rid of the milkweeds. So I had it sprayed again about this time last year. And, and it did kill the parsnip, but the milkweeds, you can't kill them. They're back.
Butterflies.
My God, somebody, somebody's getting, I mean, once you get milkweeds in it. And the milkweeds on the roadside wouldn't bother me. In the hayfield, it'd drive you nuts, but the parsnip is just.
It does grow from the roots.
It does?
Yes, it does. You have to kill the roots. It's a biannual.
Oh.
Okay, well, Brad steered me wrong.
All right, that's uh. So.
Okay.
That's an, anything else for our road commissioner or from our road commissioner? Now that we've.
You said that thing that you did. I don't even bent your finger back, like.
So I know it's a little ways away, Dave, but um. Salt thing for winter. Have, I know you're not even thinking about this when it's.
I am actually thinking about it.
Ninety-three degrees and whatever. I, I didn't know if you were thinking about.
I'm, I'm looking at doing white salt and spraying it ourselves.
You going to try that again?
Yeah. And I have already talked to Cargill and asked them, instead of giving us a, a price for treated, just give us a price for, for white. That should save us ten, twelve bucks a ton.
What's the difference?
Is it, one, one is treated and one is, one is, the, the, the treat itself has a magnesium.
Uh, okay.
Spray on it already. That's like, it's that bluish green color.
Yep.
Um, it just, it, it lowers the working point down. They say zero, I don't buy that. I think it's pretty good down to four or five. But you get down below zero, nothing really works.
Ever became of the brine stuff? Is that no longer a thing?
It is, it's a thing and it's really, really great for parking lots. The problem with it is, there's a bunch of problems with it, but it. You almost need a chemist or somebody to just mix brine. It has to be at a specific gravity. If you, if you miss the gravity low, it freezes to ice. And if you mix it too high, the salt falls out, it can't hold it. So then you end up with water.
Which freezes.
Which is freezes. Um, and to do our sections. They take anywhere from an hour and a half to. Hour and forty-five minutes. And in that time, you, you don't have time to get back. So the snow piles up and then it gets away from you and you can't catch up. Brine is very, very tricky. It's great for parking lots. Beldon uses it for GE. They stationed two trucks at GE, both plants. And they both have brines and they just, they just drive around. And there's never a flake of snow.
So take, you're saying it takes that long with, to, to apply the brine as opposed to what's it take with, with white salt?
Well, it's, it's the same, because you still got to drive the same road. You guys drive the same amount. You still got to.
I thought you were saying it was slower to apply.
No, 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 it's, it's, you, you can't, the, the salt will kind of sit there and, and melt and kind of spread and do its thing. Where the brine gets and the snow gets into it and it just starts to uh dilute. And it starts to run off and you lose that. Heat factor, I guess.
So it's not effective.
The state isn't using it. The state spent millions putting brine. Uh, teams together and all of their plant and all of their uh facilities and they don't use it. That tells you something. And they hired, and they hired chemists. They hired like kids out of college that, you know, degrees in chemistry to do this stuff. I mean, they, they got a lot of money into it and they don't do it.
You can, you can actually make the roads worse if that.
And then you can't catch up.
Yeah.
Once they turn to ice, you're done. You're, you're out.
And then you got to go to salt.
Then you got to go to salt.
And if you're not prepared.
And if you're not prepared. And that's, and, and trying to salt ice. Is, is.
Well, I just thought about this because last year we had that issue, but a lot of that was the cold weather in the south. And all those rail cars of salt went south instead of north and we were struggling, so.
And at the time, we didn't have a price for white salt, so Cargill would not sell us white salt. Until the very end of the season when they ran out of the treated salt, they couldn't get it. And all you could get was white. That's when we got white. Um, but they've got white and treated and everybody around wants treated. So we got first dibs on white.
Right.
You used to haul all the equipment to do it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the road commissioner? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Nobody here and we're going to be here all night. The room cleared after these guys got talking to them earlier. They all.
Paying no attention.
Yes, good evening. How's it going?
It's fine. Thanks for helping out with the um Quarterline Road situation, so.
You're welcome.
You know, it's funny, when they started talking, I was thinking, now Dave's maintaining that pretty good, but Dave wasn't on the traffic block tonight.
Different issue.
So I got the. I'll go first. The local one that we do every time.
The two pager or the thicker one?
The thicker one. I didn't count how many calls we had here. I'll be like one ninety, one ninety-six for the.
That includes traffic stops.
But that includes a lot of traffic stops.
So what, what, what happened in Timoth? Did I miss, did I miss something in the news?
Uh.
Well, I'm looking at this pie chart.
Probably, I suspect it was uh.
Oh.
Officer Plack is probably got called, so he uh Rooster and him get called.
Oh, oh. So when he is called.
There's a get called a lot.
Yeah, um. Are we reimbursed? Do we get something back?
Mutually.
No.
Yeah.
We were, we were having this conversation today in the office about how low K nine are for teams in the state right now. Um, used to be there were four to five teams in Rutland County alone and right now there's two. There's Officer Plackis and then there's Rutland Cities. State police don't even have dogs right now. So he's getting a lot of phone calls that.
Really?
Somebody's going to, obviously, and.
From the Stadies?
Stadies, Sheriff's Department, City.
Can we do some swapping here?
So.
I mean, you know, this, we want the Stadies to cover some things and they just put stuff on hold and then it comes to your answering machine and you have to deal with it, but. They want Rooster too, so.
Kind of, I'm, have a lot of confusion about these pie charts.
Okay.
Maybe I shouldn't be paying too much attention, but these numbers are numbers of calls.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just. It, the total number of the top five calls doesn't appear to correspond in any way to the top five areas if you added those up. I don't think it's a much smaller number. So this, I guess it's just because it's top five in the total. So there's a lot of small. Well.
We use a valve core. We put this, put in, Ted puts in this uh things we want to highlight. This is what it spits out.
This is what it spits out for me.
Yeah.
Uh. Okay, well, maybe it adds up to more like a hundred and fourteen, I guess, that are in the town. And that, but so is this is telling us that we had sixty-five. Calls related to Timoth? Is that what that means?
No, no, no. So it's a different blue. Rutland Town South. Is a darker.
Is it better than mine?
Than it is.
Can we adjust that?
I see that now.
I have no control over the colors, um, but the darker blue is Rutland Town South, which is the South End.
Well, that makes more sense.
Timoth. I don't know why it's saying.
All right, well, there's the corresponding blue over on the left is animal. Well, I guess that's, doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, no, it's.
I didn't see, when I skimmed through here, I didn't see the Timoth thing to show up, but maybe I missed it because it's.
I don't know. And there are also times when it will pop in no value and I'll go back through and I'll try to figure out what no value is. And I can't figure out what it means by no value.
There you go. Three no values if you go to.
Yeah. I go back through the cases and I try to figure out, is it a voting error? Did we do something wrong on a charge or what?
Yeah.
And I can't figure it out.
Well.
So, I, yeah.
And I'm still waiting on a response from the barracks commander on bringing their monthly stats as well. To know with committee, we had talked about wanting both ours and the state police to have a better reflection.
Mm-hmm.
Still waiting on a response from the state police.
Terms of uh types of calls. Has the proportion of traffic stops gone up relative to thefts? Or not? Or is this pretty much typical proportions?
Summer time, spring, summer, fall, when, especially when JP's back, traffic stops go up a lot.
That's what he does.
Yeah.
Those traffic stops.
Can he sit up across the street from that house? It's got to be there for a while.
It's going to be an old department.
That goes to, I know with the K nine thing and the resource management, it's like, great, if we can, if we're helping other people, but if we have some. It's getting neglected, then it becomes an issue.
Yep, VSP is pretty good about, help, help resolve. I have nothing bad to say. If, if it's something that can be, it's. They're busy and it's uh.
Manchester?
They may call us for, they may call a retail theft that happened forty-five minutes ago and they want to report it. Person's long gone. So they're not going to send a trooper down there to take a retail theft, but they're not going to do anything about. They just want to report it, so they'll give it to us.
What's that? We sent the dog down to Manchester?
He never made it. But yeah, they requested a canine because he was the closest on the board.
Yeah.
But they were able to talk their way into the car before he actually went.
Okay. So there aren't, I'm sort of going through, what did I find? Three? Four. Canine assists. All right, it, I, so it doesn't, it doesn't seem huge. There's one. That, that one in Manchester, there's two in Rutland City and one in Clarendon. I mean, I don't mind the ones close in.
You go and get the pick and choose.
They looked at the board and they said, send us, can you send us the closest dog and then.
Car was probably on the way here.
Jimmy was the closest dog and Jimmy's like, I mean, I can go if they really need me, but. They were able to talk their way into.
There must be dogs in Manchester.
They had one and for whatever reason, they no longer have one.
Well, they won't if we're covering for them, so, yeah. So at some point, just, just keep an eye on that because at some point. Why should we be the only ones subsidizing this particular service for, you know, close in, I don't mind so much. Further away, hmm.
I hear you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um. Okay.
Probably what happened in Brandon too, right? They'd had it for a while and it was expensive.
That officer went to Middlebury PD and took the dog with him.
Took the dog, okay.
So that's why Brandon doesn't have one anymore either.
Because to reboot it, I mean.
Which, a lot of money.
Some sense you're doing every time you get, and when the dog dies, you got to retrain it. And then you want, which we've seen what that involves.
Yep.
Alrighty, um, what else have you got?
So then we go to the uh.
Yeah.
Two sheets. And as you see, if you look at the very top line, uh. Guess we're back to two thousand twenty-one with numbers for this particular month. It's, since the uh. Hotel got shut down for vouchers, things have gone down. They haven't gone down to pre uh COVID times for sure. I don't, I don't know if it ever will because there's so many. Homeless people living in the woods around in the South End.
Yeah.
Uh, we know we've had a lot of problems at the uh Diamond Run Mall.
Yeah, I saw the tents up there. I drive up around occasionally, yeah.
We're, we're hoping that that gets torn up sooner rather than later. Yeah, I think they're, I think the mall people are just kind of, we had an email chain going on. Officer Perkins, what do you want us to do? We had somebody ripping down the uh light poles, aluminum. Light pole get about sixty bucks worth of uh metal off it. Local, local guy uh saw it. Was concerned, called us, said, hey, uh, they're selling these to us. I think they're coming from Diamond Run Mall. We go down there, yeah, whole bunch are missing. Officer Perkins got ahold of the mall people, had a big email chain. Yes, do something, stop that, this and that. And then he said, nail the one on the wall. What do you want us to do? Are you going to prosecute? Are you going to have somebody give a statement saying that? And then wait a couple of days and it comes back. Give them a trust best source if you can, if you can identify them. That was it.
The, and Bill sent that information to the mall owners when we had.
They, they were all part of that.
They're all part of that email chain.
I was in on it. Their property manager.
Are they doing anything?
Yeah.
All right.
Unless you've got twenty-four, seven armed guards up there. There's no way of stopping it.
They're in the woods, they're, it's just, yeah. I I tell you, officers in the city and other areas are just go south of the city, go in the woods someplace, and they'll leave you alone. That's pretty much.
Well, if these guys are going to fence the property and and it doesn't.
Mm hmm.
They're identified.
We had, we identified, I know who it is, I had photographs, everything else, and they said, yeah, just give them a trust best source. Why do we want to waste our time?
Gee.
Give me, it's a waste of time.
But it's not up to that, right? I mean, it's crime regardless of whether they.
We have to have a victim.
We have to have a victim.
And if we don't have a victim on paper, we don't have a victim.
If they don't care that no one stole their stuff, then. If they don't care, why should we care? Is it against the law? Yes. Could I charge him, do all the affidavits, write him up there? Yep.
Probably my my suggestion would be, because that probably won't be the last thing they do, do, they'll move on to somebody else next.
Mm hmm.
So if we get to get him on this one, why don't we get him on this one? That's my thinking, but.
You should go to legislature and make them change the laws back, so we can do something about this.
Yes, somebody needs to do something.
So you you literally can't prosecute unless they sign some piece of paper.
They have to sign a sworn statement to us saying that they did not give permission to these people to vandalize their property and then sell it.
They won't do that. Why would they not? I mean.
I don't know. Nobody wants to take the time, they don't.
It's.
And they want us to take the time to police when their Act two fifty permit requires them to do the policing up there.
I agree.
That's the problem, so you know, I'm back to.
I mean, you realize how much time they're being asked to describe how they're gonna keep the dust and noise down up there when they tear the stupid thing down, but I mean, come on, sign the piece of paper.
Yeah, really.
It's a paragraph.
The dust and the noise would be a minor inconvenience for a few weeks, and the problem, thi- this isn't going to go away, but it's going to at least lessen it. And you won't see this go away until the store is built and there's an actual presence there.
Well, that may be, but they do have.
Right, I know.
A requirement, and they are unresponsive when we're doing the work that they're supposed to be providing, so I'm really quite annoyed at that.
I think that sometimes.
Let's see if we can get a stronger letter put together. Bill, I'm looking at you.
Absolutely.
With Kevin and just remind them.
Email chain, right?
I I was on it.
Uh, I haven't seen it, so you probably kept it from me because you knew I'd be pissed.
The thing is, when they came here, we we would bend over backwards to support what they're doing, everything they're doing, and I think that they have. Dropped their end of it.
Well.
Big time.
Speaking, just a quick update, I did receive. Notice of a filing today from uh the mall that they have. Added um, they in responding to the second incomplete letter they got, this is the. Notice from the Act two fifty, folks, we need more information before we can give you a permit to demolish. Um, they did post um eight more. In pieces of information, a demolition equipment list, um, an air permit, um, and and so on. So they did just today respond to that second incomplete letter, so you know, again, it's not us.
Right.
Um, and we're just waiting, they are. Moving along, maybe slower than we'd like, but we sure did our part, so let me talk with Bill on this, maybe we'll set up a phone conversation with. Kevin, see if there's a more sharply worded letter we can do and just get some help here.
Go find that template in the folder labeled Graham's comma nasty. Uh, sure, you need Kevin's input for that, but.
I can, yeah, I can do, but I haven't seen the emails, but I, you know.
I mean, I've been. I've been talking with Eldons because, you know, well, I may have a. There may be some stuff we can provide them when they get to what some so.
Okay.
And what their plans are with the material and what they're going to do up there, so um, they're.
Good, to secure their stuff when they're up there.
Well, we, they were talking about.
Yeah, don't, we should let them not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These same people are probably in one of the sixteen calls at Anafford's.
Well, they're they're afraid, they're afraid to store materials up there, because they figured it'll either be burnt or removed.
Yep.
Maybe as far as uh lamp posts getting, well, the local person said, we're not taking any more steal from them.
Okay.
But it seemed to solve the problem.
Okay.
Uh, maybe they need a, they have to have a permit to take down the light posts from.
Yeah, the these people are in violation of the permit because they're they're.
They're doing demolition without a permit.
Right, that's right. However.
It seemed to me they got rid of the. Lamp post, so that would end that problem, right? They could kill a lot of, a lot of birds with the same stone, just let them tear the place down.
Sitting here thinking, where were they when we needed them down at Dewey Field, but no, that's.
Well, those were wood, Mary, they don't have any value.
They would, no money in that.
Yeah.
All right.
I said two, uh, I think two more there. One is uh Ted has been on the phone emailing the state. Uh. As far as getting AFIS machine up and running. We're waiting, we're waiting on one.
So we got the static IP address that. Everything, I have internet to the machine. I go into the machine. Okay, can't log in, so I call the company and they say, okay. Do this. They forgot to add our login. Like, okay, so I logged right in, I'm thinking. Hallelujah, I'm in. And then this kid remotely does some stuff, and he's like, you're not talking to VCIC. The state fingerprint database. So I call VCIC, who directs me to State IT, who then says. Oh, that's because uh we haven't given you permissions yet, and here's a laundry list of stuff you have to do. And so I asked. Because they gotta get Pat involved now, and. I asked State, I'm like, how come this wasn't told to me four months ago when I bought the machine? Like, hey, you bought the machine. Here are the internet requirements. Oh, we don't know, we don't talk that. You know, their VCIC, we're IT. I'm like, you're the same building, you're probably on the same floor. So I finally got the contact person today. So I'm going to reach out to them.
They gave the name, but they didn't give me.
Originally, they gave me a name.
But no way to get ahold of them.
But this afternoon, they finally said, oh, you're right, you weren't in those emails. Here's the email chain with the contact. And so I. Hit my head on my desk and saw it was five o'clock and he came here.
Because we were easier to deal with.
So.
Get answers at least when you come here. You might not like the answers, but you get the answers.
So Pat worked on this form. And he he and I talked yesterday because he asked me what's going on. I said, I don't know, I haven't heard back from State yet. So I have to call Pat now. I will do it on my end because it's supposed to be done remote. But. End of the day, if something major happens, I'll call Pat.
Okay.
But. That's my next step.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
Well, we just, we just signed a fingerprint policy for hiring of folks for rec, so. And he's about ready, so.
It's all gonna come up clean right now. When they even know.
That being said, so I should wait? Because that's part of the process, so.
Yeah, we have nothing right now, so.
Well, it just means they'd have to go to. Or state, whatever.
The state does them, city and department.
Shit, the city, we just covered the, we sent Rooster twice. They should be able to do some free, free fingerprinting for us. Just saying, no, really. You know, mutual, mutually. Yep. Okay.
Uh, the other thing is uh the two thousand fourteen Dodge Charger, we got all the stuff torn out of it. Uh. I know somebody who takes cars and flips them. It was a mechanic, and he was very interested in purchasing the Dodge Charger. We had the place over in West Rollins, he gave us what, fifteen?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred for it.
Eleven hundred?
Yep.
It's because it has the, this is the.
The holes in the.
The holes in the frame.
Frame.
So it can't be inspected.
Right.
That's, that's.
It's a setback.
Just went through that with my son.
So. I guess, I guess uh. I do, we need permission to sell them, I guess, this point in time.
Technically, it's not, it's not inspectable.
Right, that's why you had to get rid of it.
Right. So that, yeah, that's why, I mean, it was up to be replaced anyways, but it just kind of reinforced it when we couldn't inspect it. So I called Co Part. Over here, and I said. Here are the issues with it, and they got back to me with, we can give you eleven hundred.
All right, and you've got a better offer from someone else?
I, at least the same, I'll talk to him, probably give us a little better.
All right.
I'd go to the highest bidder.
Is where, yeah.
I would. Can we call like one other place just to make sure we're in the right?
Yeah.
I guess you could call.
Call Browns.
Brown salvage.
There you go.
Because that'd be the only one.
Yeah.
Do do we need to take like a vote to authorize them to sell it to the highest bidder?
Motion's made.
That we allow the.
And seconded. Twenty fourteen Charger?
Twenty fourteen car Charger for whoever give you the most money for it.
All right, but they don't have to, you don't have to put it in paper.
No, no, just, you can call around. I mean, this is, this is an uninspectable vehicle that is going for parts.
That was the saddest phone call I ever took from the the two, these two guys together in the same vehicle told me something had gone horribly wrong with the other vehicle. Yeah, that was bad.
We we lost a fire truck for that.
Yeah.
That's why engine three went, because it couldn't longer be inspected, so.
All right, motion is to authorize the police department to sell the Charger twenty fourteen to the highest bidder. And put the money in your depreciation, equipment depreciation fund?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Second.
Motion's made, so I think, okay, motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries for zip.
Is that the vehicle in the impound yard?
Yep.
I'll be down there hand now, and I see what's going on.
Wow, yeah, could you park it on Quarterline Road?
They probably tried to steal it, honestly, even might get out of it.
Birds and stones, man, I can count as well as you can.
We want to get some money out of it, we don't want it gone free. And the other thing we have is uh today we looked up in the squadron, there's a slight little brown patch, like maybe we have a leak in the roof. So.
Okay.
I just noticed it today.
So I'm. I I was on the phone yesterday with Vic, and they wanted to come, did they get ahold of you guys to get in yesterday at Old? Big Shappy?
They did, Lynn said they were walking around.
Well, they wanted to get that uh switch out of the. Truck bay by the sprinkler room. Um, so I don't know, and I told him I'd be there in the field, just come and find me and I'd let you in, but I figured I never heard from him, and so.
And Lynette told us that they were walking around, so.
I don't know, well, whatever, anyway.
Did they look at the? The stain on?
Well, that's something new, so.
We just saw it today.
Okay. Post, I think they're looking at our lobby as well.
Right, yeah, Gary came and put some sealer somewhere, but I'm not sure, I don't believe there's a moisture issue from the outside in, but I don't know, but they're they're working on that.
Second, yeah, that's down to sheet rock right now in there.
Yeah, he he did some stuff in there, and then they got to come back and finish it, um. So I can get ahold, I'll call Vic in the morning and let him know to come and see you guys for.
Yeah.
An unusual stain in the ceiling.
Yeah.
And and I'm.
Can't be too bad, it's been. Who knows, I don't know what it is, so.
Well, you know, that sheetrock thing was the same day as they. Came and tested the sprinkler system.
It was.
And he said that system had been pressed, been tested prior to, so. I don't know if there's something going on, but they'll have to pull the ceiling down and see if there's something going on. Yeah, I'll get ahold of him. Um, so we're here, Mary, uh, they, I did get an email. From. It's through Ed Clark and VMS, and it was for like, there's a statement there for a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, which I believe is the final payment plus a twenty two thousand for the. Transfer switch for the pump. Because the the, if I recall, the retainage is around one forty two. So I'm gonna check with Vic, I think we should pay for the transfer switch, because that was, but I don't think we should pay it as a lump sum.
So just, you wanna?
I I'll get the information, and I'll try to have it for the next meeting, but I think they need to break that up, and then there was a charge there from um JJ Brown for some work, the. Fire department asked for some additional circuitry wiring to be done, so I gotta try to figure this out, because they kind of lumped everything together, and it was hard for me to. Uh, come up with it, so that was going to be my report and what I just told you, so you got it all now.
Good, all right, thanks.
And the last thing we have is uh our new weapons. So we were curious, certain officer called up uh Glock to uh. Find out what was going on, and we opened a whole can of worms that we didn't realize is on. Basically, what happens was Glock sells, has what they call blue label guns, they sell them only to law enforcement, they're, they, they put together a little differently, more rugged for what we use them for. We weren't aware of this. Uh, and the only, only one person in the state of Vermont sells blue label guns.
Oh.
Yeah, so we went to somebody who said they could get them for us, but they called a place in New York. And had no authorization. It's an old internal thing, we did nothing wrong, we didn't know we were breaking any rules in Glock, so we have uh. Gone to a dealer up north, uh Peros, he has the weapons in stock, what we order, what we want, what we need. He has them. I said, don't sell them. Put them aside, we will buy them, but I wanted to get approval from the folks.
What's the price?
We have two holsters, we need five, I think, other guys.
Seven in total, but we have two.
We have two right-handed ones, there's a couple of some left-handed nature, we haven't got those yet, so those are. Well, we're trying to find those at this point in time, uh. The issue is um. The the weapons we have at this point in time, we've had a gentleman in the airports got killed, so. There's a mass exodus of. These guns, nobody wants them, and everyone, everybody wants to get rid of them, so. We were fortunate enough, we can have them. And I told them to hang on to them, but.
Waiting for the butt.
What's that?
We're waiting for the butt and the dollar sign.
Oh, yeah, so the 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 total here is for.
Seven.
For seven is uh five thousand one hundred and forty nine.
Sounds similar to what it was.
So.
But we don't have any of the host, we have two hosters and not.
So this. This is just the original quote, which he was part of the three bids, was Peros up north. The original bid was for, I think, seventy seven hundred dollars, but that's because it included. All the holsters and the weapon lights. The local dealer that we went with has all the weapon lights, and he has two holsters. So we could still get those locally, but Peros is the only place that we get these guns through.
So what would the total end up being compared to, where you've heard it?
So on, I don't have the full number right now, I just have the number for the guns from Peros.
Right.
Are they going to take the old ones or not?
The local dealer will still honor his quote and buy our guns off us for the quoted price of three hundred bucks a gun.
Even if we're not buying through him, okay.
Yep. He already, he already said yes to that.
Okay.
Apply that toward the holsters and the other supplies you need, right?
She's gonna have to.
You're gonna have to. Right.
We'll move to.
He's just not going to be able to sell you the guns.
No, that's trying to make a motion.
Uh, I moved to approve purchase of the uh. The guns from Peros.
Second. For. Fifty one hundred forty nine?
We're still in the same basic ball.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we are, yeah.
And he has them.
At this point.
You gotta get rid of these things.
Yeah.
Really?
Or somebody that we don't.
We should have had them like six months ago.
Okay, so motion's been made to purchase the. Um, new guns from Peros for fifty one forty nine. Is there any, is that right? Is there any, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there any further discussion?
I want to make sure.
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. Do we have a motion about selling our old ones?
We already approved that.
We did, as, but if he's gonna honor the same thing, that's fine. Okay. All right, so.
You did that whole liability waiver thing.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about it. Good. I'm glad we did that because there's just one layer more layer. I mean, everybody knows that if you're buying one of these guns and they're have problems and the guy buying them obviously knows this, so when he resells those, it's gonna be on him.
It is. Yeah. And it's very good because this dealer won't even take these in on trade anymore.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I think we did as good as you guys are gonna do.
Okay, now all we need is the fingerprint machine.
So do you think maybe at some point you'll get them?
He has them in stock.
We'll probably get them this. We'll probably drive up and get them this week.
One phone call will help.
Yeah. I was waiting to have this conversation with you folks, get approval and probably this week. Because they're a different make, they don't work with the old holsters. So you have to have so.
They're kind of like.
Yeah.
Uh, I wonder if that kind of like a bra has to be just perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Cell phone case, cell phone. He's lost his filter. He told you.
That's true. That is very true.
Did they give you, so the local dealer is going to be able to get you the other five holsters in a timely fashion, hopefully?
We hope.
As soon as we can find them.
We may have to vendor this out ourselves.
Yeah, or or what about the guy you're buying it for guns from?
So he is checking with vendors to see, because he doesn't have them in stock, but he's checking with vendors to see if maybe he can source them.
It just seems odd, but okay, but but we know this is a nationwide thing and we're only buying seven and some places are probably buying thousands. Right. I think you're lucky to get them.
Know that there's an agency in Vermont that is currently about to buy three hundred and twenty of them.
Right. So get your seven while the getting.
Yeah, really.
And the ammunition was the same.
Yes.
That helps.
That is, yes. I don't think Glock can build them fast enough. Nope.
Probably not.
I think I use that analogy because my wife always gives me a hard time.
Violating the first rule of.
So I, okay, I do have one other order of business and that is today is August twelfth, which is the birthday of Deputy Chief Ted Washburn. So happy birthday.
That's why he came.
Should we sing?
We've had enough trouble already.
So you guys are well aware of the encampment at the end of Ranbury Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
I had, I was talking with the second constable about uh, um, animal complaints down there last week. You guys probably all aware of this. He, I don't know if you saw in the orders, but JB, he did purchase some equipment for handling dogs and stuff because he had some issues, but um.
They're ever, they're around the Diamond Mall.
Yeah.
They're off from S- S- uh, Sewer Road way up there. And got the dead end section there.
He said it's quite a village down there.
It is.
Yeah.
Yep. It's kind of like every year they pack it up in the winter and leave all their debris and then they come back and start over early spring and do a different spot and this whole thing starts all over again.
You know, it's funny that, and I don't know how to say this, but had all of.
Your filter.
No, but Cortina, they had all those doors and places. I'm surprised they haven't tried to move back in.
I'm pretty sure they have somebody there still twenty four seven.
Well, they didn't stop people from breaking in before, so why are they doing it now?
Really?
I bet you the back doors aren't fixed yet.
Probably because they're not paying, so they won't let them.
That's right.
I'm figuring they just be there. All right.
Okay, thank you.
John, I just have one thing to add.
True, true.
Down just in general.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much. Appreciate your help. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Yeah, we're both made. Happy birthday. I am a little bit closer.
You keep. All right, what you got?
Um, those are the door measurements and the three pin. So the sooner you can get it, the night will go forward.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Three hundred thirty six by six seven, that's seven eighty one, right? Six seven, six seventy two. Yeah, six foot seven. I think the ones. Yeah, I think the ones at home, but I will.
Okay.
And I am taking a mini vacation. I forgot to tell the two, when you said that I'm not around Thursday and I'll be back Friday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Cool is all set.
Thanks, Mike.
All righty, Kerry Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Sleep.
No.
Hi, I'm not sleeping, but.
So what have you got? Thanks for all of your help this past week, you know, figuring out where money's coming from for checks and attesting to documents. I appreciated that. Thanks.
Not a problem. I really don't have too much at all tonight. Nothing um, different is going on in the office. The tax bills went out. Uh, they should have hit mailboxes last week. Um, I will put it out there that there are several calls coming in saying that um, uh, you know, people have multiple properties, so um, they are getting one bill, but not the other. Um, so what I'm suggesting to people is just keep an eye out for it. Give the mail a little bit more time. Our mail service obviously is going through some stuff too. Um, so if they don't get their bill within, I don't know, the end of next week, um, just to give me a call and I can easily give them another copy, but um, that's pretty much all I have. Uh, there's a pink slip that went in the um, oh, I call it a pink slip, but it's a, it's a pink piece of paper, um, informational only for the tax bills and how to pay on time and all the little tidbits that we know about um, the taxes and the homesteads. Um, various amount of calls coming in on that as well. So just my suggestion is um, give it a read and if you have any questions, call, but it's nothing that you need to um, sign or bring anywhere. Um, we're getting all, all different kinds of calls. It's kind of funny, so. Um, informational purposes only and um, keep it handy if you ever have any call, uh, questions, but that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, and we have a B C A, what Board of Abatement hearing coming up?
Yes, I believe it's on the twentieth next week. Um, for the property that burned in May, the garage um, on Route seven south, the Puma um, property.
Okay.
So that's, that's scheduled. Um, so if you are on the B C, if you're on the B C A and you're able to make it, um, I have sent those out. Just let me know if you can attend. If I haven't heard from you, I've heard from some.
Yeah, I I should be able to. Um, so we do have is Bill is entered Ted's, oh, wait, come on in.
Yes.
Um, liquor license.
Oh, yeah.
This is for uh, third class restaurant bar license for Maple Angus over here in Center Rutland. Um, and
No problem.
No problem, says our chief of police. So is there a motion from the select board?
Show move.
Motion to approve from Sharon.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for nothing.
Can I just for two seconds?
Yep.
Carrie.
Yeah.
Tomorrow we'll probably give uh, Peros give us an invoice, an invoice number. So we can get you to cut us a check for new weapons. It will come over here and get you and make us check out for us. It's been approved by the board.
Yeah, I did hear that. Absolutely. That's great. Hey, thanks for saying that the invoice and the invoice numbers come into.
Yep, we'll make sure it has a number on it.
Okay. Not a problem.
All right. Anything else for our town clerk or treasurer? If not, thanks very much. Appreciate your help.
All right, good night.
Good night. Uh, Mike Delahanty, no. Uh, Joe D'Nardo, Public Safety Building Clerk. I think you filled us in pretty much. Thank you very much. Barbara is not, Barbara noise pulling planning commission report. Um, is not going to be able to make it tonight. I will say that I visited with the planning commission. Um, what, last week was it?
Four.
Week before and um, was mostly for the pocket part because I I wanted to hear their ideas and um, Phase one, which is basically clearing vegetation, getting the invasives out and doing some pretty minimal work. Um, and I've actually got a card of a landscape person who might be able to help us out with that. And then we use volunteers to do the work, so little something there. Um, they also, I stayed around and they also did um, well, they, I won't go into, I'll let Barbara report on the subdivision thing that they, they did get squared away for the developers, so they were able to do that. Um, but they did raise with me the subdivision ordinance. We asked them because ours is so out of date. Um, and Kevin Brown, our attorney, did give them names of some municipalities that had ordinances that the, they might want to look at for templates. Um, I did listen to um, quite a bit of pushback from them saying we really need to do a combined uh, building ordinance, which would include subdivision or land development ordinance, which would include subdivision and zoning. I explained to them that is not where this board is and not the authorization we gave them. And would they please work on subdivision? So it was, you know, they feel quite strongly, we should be looking at both. I passed that along for your information. But they now have information that they need to um, pull out a subdivision ordinance and start working on a template. So they're just keeping you folks informed.
Yep.
Um, all right. So I just gave the Barbara a report, I guess. Larry Dalvinieri.
Not on.
Not on.
Marcia was, but she left.
Okay, we do have in the green folder. You'll recall from time to time, we are asked to sign a errors and emissions certificate, which it makes some changes to the grand list. One is for um, the Castle property, the other is a Thomas property. Um, must be attached. Let's see. Uh, the state of Vermont, this is the explanation. The state of Vermont today provide a new current use exemption values for the two above referenced properties. Well, their real pro, real value assessments did not change from lodged grand list. The exemption values increased the taxes overall liability and total grand list. So that's the explanation on those two properties and we have to approve this. It's been signed by Marie and um, Marie Fagnant and Marcia Chaffey. Um, if we agree, we need to sign it approving those that errors and emissions change. So I'll entertain a motion on that one.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for nothing. Okay, and I'm gonna pass this to Joe. Next is errors and emissions certificate for A A commercial, A A commercial test, which is a fake account. Um, this is a practice account for use by listers only. No real taxpayer. Was to be inactive, but it got billed inaccurately. Need to delete from the accounts. So um, and all three of our listers sign that. They created a fake account to help them process some things and now they need to get rid of it.
Has a chance to use the name A A commercial.
A A commercial test. Is there a motion to approve this change?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, motion carries for nothing and I'm gonna sign this one. Okay.
You did see the movie uh, Shawshank Redemption, didn't you?
Oh, it was a while ago.
And he made the fake account with the fake guy and all the things. And then when he broke out, he went and got all the money.
Ooh.
And he was the guy that he made up. The fake guy.
Okay. Um, so Marcia, anything else? No, I think we're done here. Thanks, Marcia. All right.
Been here too long, man. It's been one of those nights.
It's been a month like this. Okay, Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Party neither tonight.
No fire chief tonight. All right. Bill Sweet, town administrator. Is he around?
Make up all the time.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Do I now have these emissions things? Oh. I'm about to.
You're having me back? Oh, I think. Uh, all right. Hello.
Um, Bill, welcome back. I hope you had a really restful.
We did. We had a very nice vacation.
Good.
Uh, so got a few things to to wrap up. Um, on your desks is a draft of a letter related to Heather Lane and uh, updating their address. So um, I I drafted that to Bill send out. There's some, gonna be some fill in the blanks when we decide how, what the timeframe is we would like to do this in, but um, your thoughts, suggestions, or if we're, we're good to go and we just want to kind of, I was gonna try to make up, put in some dates that align with with board meetings and that people want to give people a chance to come if they wanted to and talk, but.
Well, do we have to make, do we have to approve this or do we wait until?
This, this process is, is up to us in Mendon to kind of run with, so.
All right.
Um, this was a, this was to say like, hey, you know, basically say, hey, introduce them all to the fact that this is likely going to happen and to give them the opportunity to have input into what the name will be.
Well, it says it was decided Heather Lane in the town of Rutland would change. We haven't made that official decision yet.
Uh, we have not. Um, that's why.
It sounded like we've been encouraged.
So, so I did talk, I got, I I found, I went to our road book. Heather Lane exists after nineteen eighty three. Um, Mendon has records back to nineteen sixty. Um, I went to the state person that does the the numbering. They do the town highway numbering. His records match those. Then E nine one one coordinators, all their records go back, I think, to the early nineties when nine one one started and that's, it just was, it was already, it was already there, so. Um, we didn't, we didn't name it first, um, which probably was going to be the the biggest one, but um, yeah.
I guess the thing that disturbs me most is that there was an ambulance that went to the wrong place. That's just.
But we need, the, 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 the package deliveries, that's an inconvenience, but, but that, that was a, that's a different, a different level, for sure.
And they're not real close together, but close enough to get.
They're, they're not.
Same zip code, yeah.
Zip, the zip code and whatever. So, so I think that, I mean, this letter is, we just need to come up with dates, um. Do we want to send this out and have a response in a couple of weeks?
So I was thinking, I mean, we have
and then.
September, October and the, the, when, when we've done some name changes before the state and I, when I've talked with Tyler from the state, they really try to avoid changing anything from October through December. That is uh, because it messes with holidays, like, it's a bad, so if we start this now, it, we could be like, we get this all figured out and then January first, it could all change. So that's, that's usually.
Very considerate.
Yeah, but yeah, we, we've done, we've talked before and we, we, it makes total sense. We just avoid unless it absolutely was drastically necessary to changing anything during the last quarter of the year, so.
Okay, I think first we need a motion for us to agree that our Heather Lane needs to be discontinued. As a name. Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in the second. And any discussion on that? Then we'll move on to tidying up the letter. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries for zero. No. Um, for the letter.
You did some research, though. There's how many residents?
Oh, we have like eight.
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine. They have fifteen or more.
No, I'm just thinking that I would like to see those, maybe, I don't know how well the neighbors get along, but it would be nice if they got together and chose a name that they're gonna live on.
I, uh, yeah, absolutely. And I think those neighbors up there are pretty, pretty close. Like, there's a lot that know each other pretty well up there, so.
So maybe that. Maybe that's what we should put in here, that we would like, you know, they came up with a name that didn't conflict with Rutland City or Mendon.
Well, so, so that was, that was where I have in there that uh, we have to check compatibility with the state. There is a, there is a validation check we run to make sure names don't, don't, aren't, aren't too close or, you know, they can't have like a, like a park lane and a park street like we, like we, we already have. So, you know, but tho- those are, those would not pass anymore. So um, yeah, so it's, we would have to run a check to make sure that it's unique enough.
No, I just like that idea of not us telling them, them telling.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's, that's why I would like, I would.
Um, maybe we could put in here that um, the changes will not occur before the first of the year.
Sure.
So just so they'll know that.
Yeah, well, and that's why I was, you know, that was just.
Cause you brought that up and that would be good. So that kind of puts a start the new year off with a new na- new address.
And so effective January one twenty twenty.
And you gotta worry about the returns.
Right?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, um, so here's what I've got. What, first of all, there's the, what date do we want them to respond to Bill by? And remember that they've got to get the letter and they've got to talk with their neighbors. All right, that is September ninth?
Ninth, yeah, that's fair.
Okay, September ninth. And so I would say the next sentence that starts a list of suggestions, I would add, including yours.
Hmm.
Will be compiled and checked for compatibility. Um. We expect a decision on the name to be made by, when are we going to make the decision?
If we have the list by September ninth, we could have, uh, we could have recommendations by the twenty-third. That's, that's not hard.
Okay, September twenty-third. Um. We could also add somewhere in there, if you have a group, if you have a, if your neighborhood agrees on a suggested name, please let us know that as well.
Absolutely. And if they want to, they could come to the, I mean, if we have, like, if there's three or four and they all are passed, then if they come to the meeting and say, okay, this is what our preference is, it's kind of like what we do with Honeybee Place, you know, there was a few different options and that was what what they wanted, so that was easy.
All right. Um. And we could also point out that we're um, our select board will be meeting on Sept- both September ninth and September twenty-third at six P M. Should you wish to attend either.
Absolutely. It'd be, it'd be great to have them be part of that discussion, so that would definitely help.
All right, so I just scribbled some suggestions.
Thank you.
Going in the green folder. Okay.
Uh, and the other thing we have in the green folder are the fuel bids that were, uh, there were, I think, three for heating oil and two for propane and all of them were received on time.
Okay, so.
There's a little packet of them.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So the first is the propane bids. Um, this is for the public safety building and the town fire station in Center Rutland. First is Irving Fuel Propane Bid. If I can even understand it, don't we usually have that? All right. Fixed propane is one doll- one point six five seven per gallon. Variable propane on August eighth, one point two two six per gallon. And then there are the fixed propane rates are valid until August eighth twenty twenty-five at eleven fifty-nine. If we went that way, um. Okay, and then there's offer employees in town of West Rutland discounted pricing for their homes. I think maybe they were using a template there. Okay, uh, next is Procter Gas.
Who are we doing business with now?
Procter Gas.
Yeah, I wish I could buy propane for that place. I guess if we went with them, we could.
We also, by the way, have to pay a environmental fee of, looks like one cent. They are probably at a lust fee, leaking underground storage tank fee of a tenth of a cent. Okay.
Well, and I think that was another half.
Gas is uh, pleased to present a fixed price bid to supply all propane needs for the town of Rutland. Estimated at five thousand dollars, the town public safety building at McKinley Avenue and the Center Rutland Fire Station. We are current supplier of both. The fixed price shall be one point seven nine nine per gallon for the period of time, September one, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-one and it doesn't look they are, look like they are offering a variable price. So.
One seven seven?
Uh, one point seven nine nine. And fixed price from Irving is one point six five seven.
Well, cents a gallon cheaper.
Right?
Yep.
I'm just, I, I'm okay, and there, you know, uh, Irving says that, which right now is the lower bidder. We cannot hold the fixed pricing beyond the mentioned deadline, which is uh, August eighth.
That was four days ago.
Right.
August eighth was the due date of the bids. And the letter said they were going to be open tonight.
So I don't know what, what to do about this. We could do a provisional approval, I guess, if you were so inclined.
But it's not otherwise a deadline, right? Isn't that unclarity? And they've also got, should probably revise the end of their letter, so.
Oh, so it doesn't refer to West Rutland, it refers to Rutland Town.
Get that revised for next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bill could give us a little summary.
And um, I'm just looking at this, the the two environmental fees. And I there's no mention of them in the Procter Gas, which was the higher one.
I think it's, I think it is, yeah. I think it may, it may just be built into the price, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, it's.
They didn't separate it. I'd assume, I would guess it's part of the price, the one seven seven.
One seven nine nine. All right, so do you have enough information, folks? What's your pleasure? This is the propane bid.
Well. If they said that was good through the eighth and today's the twelfth, I don't know if that price is still good.
And that's the problem.
I mean, we could prove it and find out, I guess. And it is a lot lower, so.
It's about ten cents a gallon cheaper.
Yeah.
They say, no, it's not.
But that's not the lowest one.
Yeah, it is, I guess, yeah.
That's Irving's.
Okay, I guess worst thing is they say no, but.
Yeah.
Make a conditional.
And we definitely revisit with whatever the new price.
Um, so it, conditional approval, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Irving's price based on that price is good after the eighth.
Okay.
We can, we can open them till the twelfth.
This is the fixed propane price of one point six five seven per gallon.
Plus the.
Plus the two
Yeah.
environmental fees, really.
One point one cents.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um. With the proviso that it's still a good number. Further discussion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries for nothing. All right, that's that one. And I'm just going to put all of this stuff in. The next is the bids for um, heating oil and diesel, looks like this is.
I missed that meeting when, I think, did we make any decisions yet on purchasing a tank and buying diesel fuel for the trucks? Or is that?
This is just for municipal town hall, town highway garage and municipal backup generators.
So that's, that's not for the equipment, yeah. Okay, we didn't.
Dave was looking at a thousand gallon tank and then he he was looking at, I think it was Champlain Valley Fuels that could could sell him everything.
Yep.
And then Irving also approached him and said that they could also sell him everything. So I think he's looking at the different options because the suppliers may be able to supply him with the infrastructure, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, cause I do know.
Well, Dave's still on if he wants to answer the question, but I'm not sure he can hear us.
Yeah.
All right, well, this is, let's do the bids.
Yeah, this is just for the heating oil for the gen- and for the buildings and the generator.
Yes.
This is town hall, town highway garage and municipal backup generators. Right, first is from Champlain Valley Fuels. And their number is option one at a fixed rate of two dollars and sixty-eight cents plus uh, point oh two state excise tax. All right.
Does it pay tax?
We shouldn't, should we?
I don't, wouldn't think so.
I don't believe, I think the different, um, municipality shouldn't pay tax.
Um, yeah, I think we're excited.
Don't have to, okay.
Next is option two, state rate variable OPIS, OPIS plus twenty-five cents. I E. Week of August third through ninth, two dollars forty-four three four cents. So the fixed is two six eight plus two cents state excise tax, if it applies. The variable is uh, two point four three four.
So that's the variable rate, the day of delivery, like.
Right, yeah, it's whatever it is.
Whatever OPIS means.
It's their rack rate, it's the oil production, something, yeah.
Something, whatever, then they.
Okay, next is from Irving. And fixed heating oil two dollars point seven eight seven per gallon. Variable heating oil on August eighth, two dollars point five nine seven per gallon. And variable diesel on August eighth, two point eight one two per gallon. So.
I still don't get it.
Higher on both than Champlain Valley. And last one, Johnson Energy.
The variable rate for that person was the rack, basically rack plus twenty-five cents, right? No, the first one you read.
First one?
Yeah, it was twenty-five cents.
Rate variable OPIS plus twenty-five cents.
Did Irving's give us their?
Two, oh, okay, two point four three four and two point, well, you know, it looks like Champlain's is higher on the variable.
Right.
Did.
Well, that was the fixed.
What is Irving's price for the variable? Did they give you a price?
Irving's variable for heating oil
Yeah.
is two dollars fifty-nine seven.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't tell us what the margin is over the rack price. There's, there's no, like.
I'm looking through the, he's got, you know, another page and a half.
As of a certain date, right? And versus the other.
Well, they they quoted on the day of when they do the the bid, so normally they'll tell you that it's like Champlain Oil told us it's twenty-five cents over their costs, basically. And Irving's didn't, they just didn't tell us what that differential is. Cause they were two fifty-nine.
So you've got Irving. Do you want Champlain's again?
Well, Champlain's was a, was a two forty-four now, but it's twenty-five cents over the rack price.
Yes.
But Irving didn't tell us how much they're charging over the rack price. So we don't, I don't know how they're getting their variable rate. So we we won't know what that.
Okay, well, there's one more. So let's just like confuse it more. Okay.
Perfect. I like that.
Next is uh, Johnson Energy. Well, uh, number two fuel oil to all properties of the town of Rutland at the following price, beginning September one through August thirty-one. Forty cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost on the day of delivery with a maximum cap rate of two dollars point six nine nine for the contract period. Today's rate would be in print. Today's rate would be two dollars six one nine for reference.
They're forty cents over the price. And a cap rate of two seven, which is less than Irving's and about the same as Champlain Oil. Champlain Oil, I think, has the lesser price for the um, variable, because they're twenty-five cents over whatever the cost, their cost is.
Right, but they.
That's what you think's gonna.
Yeah, right, but but Champlain Valley doesn't say there's a cap where Johnson says with a maximum.
Right. And I think that's what's always been the deciding factor in the past.
Johnson was two six nine cap and what was the?
Two six nine nine, so it's really two seven oh.
What was the?
No cap.
Champlain Valley.
Champlain Valley.
Two sixty-eight fixed price.
Two sixty-eight plus the two cents. Well, the excise tax, we don't think applies.
So, so Champlain and Johnson's are about the same price for the fixed.
Except Johnson's capping.
Yeah, it could go lower. Right, what was theirs was based on a formula.
Uh, forty cents per gallon over the Johnson Energy cost on day of delivery.
Right.
And for reference, they say today's rate would be two dollars six one nine.
They might save a few pennies, but probably not.
They they won't, so Johnson's won't go above the basically two dollars and seventy cents a gallon. They, you know, so they'll eat some of the cost if the margin is less than forty cents.
So they, they could be less than the two sixty-eight quoted by the other one, but.
Correct.
That's. But, but their prices are gonna go up.
Their capped prices are about the same. I mean, we've done with Johnson's for.
Yeah, so Irving is higher. So we're looking at fixed, right? And um, Irving's the, is the highest of the three. So we're down to Johnson, whom we've been dealing with, and Champlain.
Right.
Johnson caps theirs. So what's your pleasure?
So Johnson is current and there's a small chance of it being cheaper, so.
Well, I.
But it won't go crazy.
Uh, so, but I, but I also, well.
Worst case scenarios is one penny more than the other.
Right, um.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah, cause Champlain didn't said that that was, they just said that's a fixed rate, so that's going to be that rate.
Exactly.
The entire winter, starting, uh, so the, it it won't go lower where with Johnson's, we could get a lesser rate, but it won't exceed what their fixed rate is.
Right.
So I move that we accept the Johnson contract for.
Second. Anyone want to look these over, so?
Is there a separate item for generator fuel? It's all the same.
It's the same fuel.
All the same.
And and that's what made me chuckle when Irving said that diesel fuel is too no, I'm good, Mary. You you explained it well. It's two dollars and eight eighty-one cents and the heating oil was two because I'm not sure why it's two or three cents more because it's same stuff.
So we have um, it actually is a variable rate for Johnson Energy, okay, that we're going with, not the fixed rate.
Right.
Okay.
Well, they didn't give you a fixed rate. They gave you a cap.
They gave me a cap.
Yes, right, which is.
A little different.
Okay, so did you make the motion?
I made the motion that we go with Johnson.
Seconded.
And Sharon seconded. Any further discussion? This is forty cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost on day of delivery with a maximum cap rate of two point six nine nine for the contract period. Any, no further discussion? All in favor, please say, oh, you need to authorize me to sign.
Authorize the board chair to sign on behalf of the county.
Sign, and that's part of the motion. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero.
And then, you know, the other deal with the, if we go with the tank and fuel, that'll be separate.
And we're gonna it, was there a place for me to sign on the other one? So I don't have to come back.
For the propane? So we recently had fuel oil delivered to the farm about two weeks ago and it was three ten.
Yeah.
Which is twenty-five cents, fifteen cents less than it was in May.
So we didn't take any do we, I'm sorry, folks. It's been.
We voted to accept Irving's propane price.
Okay, um, provisionally, do you want me to, there's no place for me to sign. Takes care of that. Okay. Provisionally.
And that's provided that what they said is going to take place, even though we're four days after their.
Yeah. Okay.
That is everything I have.
Is that everything? All right. Oh, I do have a little thank you note.
Oh, yes.
This is from uh, Wyatt, who was a scholarship recipient of ours and um, there's no last name.
That'd be Fuller, I think.
Fuller. Wyatt Fuller, class of twenty twenty-five. So if you recognize him.
That's him.
Okay, very good. He sent us a thank you note. Thank you for all your love and support, Wyatt. So thank you, Wyatt. I guess we can put that somewhere. Um. The update on the select board project list. I think I gave you a little one on the park. The update on the select board project list. I think I gave you a little one on the park, Pocket Park, just from my visit with those folks. Any committee reports that we haven't talked about? We talked a little about rec committee.
Talked a lot about.
All right, so we talked a lot about that. All right.
I stirred up a can of, but that's, that's my job.
That's your job.
With everybody.
Okay.
There was something that I wanted to bring up.
Oh, I do. There is one other thing. We were trying to set a meeting with Kevin Brown about the, uh, our contracts or, you know, how to approach the city with water and sewer issues. He was going to be gone, you'll remember, through most of the rest of this month. So the two dates available were um, Aug- September second and September sixteenth. Sharon responded by saying she's available on the sixteenth, but not on the, the second. Um, I'm available either. Any, what's the availability of other folks here? So we can nail this down.
Sorry. So we're looking for the sixteenth. I told you, I, as far as I know right now, they're fine, but
Okay.
In a couple of weeks, I'll have a lot more information.
Oh, right, cause of kids' schedule.
So we were looking, we were looking to do that on an off night, right?
Yes.
That's why the second and the sixteenth, okay.
Matt, you said either right now?
Yes, right.
Okay, and Mary is nine sixteen or second. Joe?
I can do either, I think, right now.
Sixteen or second.
Um.
So.
We need to ask Dave because we need him involved with this.
All right, Dave, are you on there?
Yep, I'm good with either.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna need his expertise, his knowledge of the workings of our neighbor.
Okay, so it's only Kurt that we don't know. And we know that Sharon can't do it on the second, so.
So I think we're gonna shoot for the sixteenth.
I think we should probably shoot for the sixteenth and just tell Kurt.
Yeah, we're gonna do this on the sixteen, cause he's.
He's the one who want, he wanted this. Yeah.
Trying to find some way to make this better for all of us, but I don't, I don't just yet.
All right. Okay, so that's what I had. I will be in touch with Kevin about that. Um.
I gotta start writing something down. There was something.
Before you think of this, since Kurt's not here, would you like a motion for me?
Or?
Well, I, I mean, I don't wanna get into you, but.
That's all right. I, I, there was something I wanted us to talk about and start looking into, but it couldn't have been that important, cause it's gone. I, I don't have a clue what that.
Okay. Okay, I think I had the things that. Motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.